There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Will we approve the agenda?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda has been adopted. I need approval of the minutes from May 8, 2014, or any change or additions. Need to know those at this time. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 8, 2014? Motion second. All in favor? Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Members of the council that's in the audience? Council Gilmore?
No. Y'all be quiet. That'd be better.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Commissioner, Mr. Chair, are you saying they come from?
Well, if you don't speak now, you can wait.
I would like to, but go ahead.
Okay.
I'm having a little trouble hearing. I don't think other people can hear either.
Can you hear me out there?
No.
Craig?
Something's wrong with the, um...
Bob, could you get someone to check the microphones? Stuart, check yours and see if they can hear you.
How is this sound? Can you hear this?
Yeah.
Apparently, the ones that say nope apparently did, but I don't know.
What about this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Testing, one, two, three. Can y'all hear this? Hello?
If you can't hear, we'll get someone in here to check it for us. Go ahead, council lady.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, Chairman McLean. I appreciate you as well as the rest of the commissioners for their time in service, and also our appointed council member Hunt, who we voted for. We appreciate your service as well. I'm here to speak on two bills that are here before you this evening. The first one is the Cultural Heritage Overlay District. I'm asking that you pass and support this bill and give us a time to get it to the council. And then after we have it at council, I will ask for a deferral so there can be more discussion between the stakeholders. So I do ask for your permission for that and your support. All right? And that's for the Cultural Heritage Overlay. In addition to that, it's also another one that I would like to speak to, which is the Music Square West. I would ask for your approval for this. I think there will be continued discussions about this development. I think it's an awesome development for the city of Nashville. We did have a community meeting, and I know that the developers will continue to work with the community. So I do ask for your support for both of those, and I do appreciate your time, each one of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Todd, if you'd like to speak. Any other council members in the audience that I've overlooked that would like to speak at this time? Council Lady Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman McLean, Vice Chair Clifton, Honorable Distinguished Members of the Commission, Karen Johnson, Councilwoman for District 29. I'm here on the case that was deferred one meeting regarding Moss Place. I understand that there is going to be consideration today due to the information that I submitted by a lot of homework, a lot of work, providing information to dispute what was shared at the last Planning Commission meeting by the developer, that there was not a cemetery on the property where the proposed development is. Well, there is a 19th-century cemetery on that property. It has been verified by the Register of Deeds office. All of that information has been sent over to the planning staff. I also, today, also want to leave with the commission pictures of the conditions of the property that's currently on there, the house is currently on that property, because it's part of my case in urging you all to please hold this developer to the letter in terms of submitting information, which of all, of what we want is an archaeological study to be completed and submitted by all metro agencies. And we would like that a condition by the Planning Commission be that before any grading or excavation take place, that the developer provides a study and updated plans of the proposed development before any approvals by metro departments are made. I'm also going to submit a list of other things and other concerns that the residents who are here today would like to have reviewed as they expressed at the last meeting prior to any approval. But I would like for you to honor the request of the staff in a deferral so that a lot of these issues can be worked out. I understand from the developer that he does not want to come and submit for a deferral because it stops the clock. And when we start to do things that are technical, to stop a clock, and your intentions are wrong, then it's bad for the community. And so I want to urge you all to please take a steady, careful eye to this concept plan because it does have sinkholes on the property. The plan that he presented to us at the community meeting on Monday, it clearly shows a sinkhole on one of the properties where the house is proposed to be, well, one of the houses is proposed to be built, as well as an additional sinkhole in the back of the properties. And this could have the probability of expansion. So again, I urge you to do the right thing and stop the clock if you can, since the developer is trying to get around that technicality. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Davis, do you like to speak? Afternoon, Davis.
Scott Davis.
Okay. Are there any councilmen in the room that would like to speak? Come forward. Black phone's still not working. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Nashville Next update, Jennifer.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Jennifer Carlet. I'll be presenting an update on our work with Nashville Next. Among the other projects with Nashville Next, we have several resource teams, and I'm going to be presenting today on the work of the Education and Youth Resource Team. As I was noting, we've got seven resource teams, and these resource teams bring topical expertise on issues that are going to be impacting Nashville over the next 25 years, issues that Nashville Next will respond to. The work of the Resource Team is to help the Steering Committee and the community understand trends that Nashville must respond to. I'll be speaking to those for Education, Youth, and Moment, to develop goals and policies and actions in light of these trends and in light of the community's vision, and then to harness our land use, transportation, and infrastructure investments, our programs and services within metro to guide us to that vision and to help implement the plan after adoption. A list of the Education and Youth Resource Team members can be found on our website, So the work of the Resource Team is that last summer and fall, they worked on identifying the major forces that will impact Nashville with regard to education and youth over the next 25 years. And in late winter and the spring, they've been working on goals and policies in light of those trends and forces. And then thus, this far, fall, they'll be working on action items to implement those goals and policies after they've received feedback on the goals this summer from the community. In terms of the issues and trends that this Resource Team has discovered and discussed, they've spent quite a bit of time talking about school choice, school siting, and genuine access. They have taken the position that in the future, Nashville will be seeing more options in school choice, whether it's in private schools or within the public school system, and that that should be as a given, and that school siting, where we place our schools so that they are available to all students to make informed choices and have their families act on those choices for their education, that the school siting becomes more important. They've also adopted a conversation about genuine access and the idea that if you have a school available to you, it's not enough that you have the option to go there. We also need to discuss what barriers might exist to you going to that school, whether they're transportation barriers or financial barriers and the like. So they've looked at this broadly in terms of providing genuine access to children and families to go to the school of their choice. The group has also talked about supporting families and the caregivers and about the types of supportive programming for workforce development and housing and transportation that allow families and caregivers to focus more time and energy on their children. They've talked a lot about the role of the broader community support in face of changing demographics. This is data from 2010 on Davidson County that shows that about 22% of households in Davidson County have children at home. The projection is that by 2040, we will be down to below 20% of families and households in Davidson County will have children in the home. And this gives a lot of folks an opportunity to kind of check out on what it means for our children and youth in the future. And this Resource Team has talked a lot about how we engage all Nashvillians in the future of our children. They've talked quite a bit about valuing children and youth, and they've worked from data such as this provided by MNPS about children in public schools in third grade and how many students we have that are testing proficient or advanced in reading and language art versus the children that are below basic. They've discussed what actions we need to take as a city to prepare our children for tomorrow's world and specifically for the kinds of jobs that are going to be available in the future. This slide shows in the dark blue bars current jobs in 2000 and what type of education and training they required compared to new jobs through 2019 and what kind of education and training they will require. And you can see that in the future, a GED and some experience or less, there will be fewer jobs available to folks with that level of education and training. From that, the Resource Team has come up with their goals and policies. And again, these will be released to the public this summer for public comment. You're getting the short version here, but there's a longer version that will be available this summer. The goals lay out the broad community-level desires. The policies are kind of the statement of intent of how we get to those goals. And then down at the bottom, this fall, we'll work on concrete action steps that'll go in the implementation section. So here are the goals that Education and Youth Resource Team has devised. The first is talking about that community-wide vision and agenda and how we get the broad Nashville community, folks without children, folks whose children have grown up, to be involved in how we care for our children and families. The second focus is on education, and it's about providing children and their families and caregivers with quality education opportunities, the information to make an informed decision, and then genuine access to follow through on that choice. The third goal is about providing support and pathways for opportunity for families and caregivers so that they can focus more time on their children. And then the fourth is about making Nashville's neighborhoods safe and accessible and welcoming for families so that these children have good places to grow up, since their neighborhood can have such an effect on their childhood and on their future. So these are the goals that the Education and Youth Resource Team has developed, and again, they'll be before the community for input this summer. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jennifer. While you're there at the podium, any items to be deferred or withdrawn?
There are a few items on the deferral agenda. The first is item number six, 2014Z 015TX 001, Construction, Demolition, Landfill, and Recycling Facilities. This is a request to amend the zoning code to modify the conditions pertaining to lot size, setbacks, street standard, landscaping, and hours of operation for construction, demolition, landfills, and recycling facilities. Staff recommendation is to defer this item to the June 12, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 13, 2013Z 008PR 001, Sawyer Brown Road. A request to rezone from SP to RS 80 zoning for property located at Sawyer Brown Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the August 14, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 18, 2014S 084001, 300 Tillman. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 300 Tillman Lane, zoned R6. Staff recommendation is to defer this item to the June 12, 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
On the agenda, item five was to be deferred. Does applicant want that to be deferred, or you want that to be heard today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brad Scarborough here on behalf of Moss Springs LLC, and we do not have any, we are not requesting the deferral, but we do not have any opposition to the deferral to the next meeting.
Okay. Then that item will be heard, so.
Yes, it will be heard. Staff does not want the commission put in the position of having to approve this at your next meeting. There's a lot of complex issues, and unless the applicant requests deferral, staff would recommend disapproval when we get to that item.
Do you still want to, you don't want to request deferral, then that'd have to come from you at this point, otherwise it's going to be heard, and...
If I could speak with my client very briefly to get authority, we were under the understanding that as last week...
You go ahead and do that. We'll go ahead with business, then as soon as you decide that, you come back and we'll either put on deferral or not.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So right now... Is this one better? Can you hear me now? Can you turn the volume up anyway, Craig?
It's up as far as it'll go. Just have to be close to mics, please.
Don't we usually set this close to it? Anyway. Jennifer, items eight, 13, and 18, then will be on deferral. Is that correct?
It's item six, 13, and 18.
Six, 13, and 18. Okay. Commissioners, you've heard the ones to be on deferral. Is there a motion to approve those or to defer those one meeting?
Motion second for deferral.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll come back to item five if they decide they want to, they'll let us know whether it's to be deferred or whether they hear that. Items on consent.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As a notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. Item number one, 2006SP 077001, Rolling Hills Amendment. A request to amend the Rolling Hills specific plan district for property located at 3485 Hamilton Church Road to permit up to 56 single-family residential lots and seven townhomes. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number four, 2014SP 032001, Ewing Drive Townhomes. A request to rezone from RS 7.5 to SPR zoning for property located at Ewing Drive to permit up to 28 residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 10, 2014SP 034001, 942 Riverside Drive. A request to rezone from SPR to SPR zoning for property located at 942...
Jennifer, I've got a request to pull that one.
Okay. Item number 11, 2014SP 035001, 7347 Charlotte Pike. A request to rezone from R 15 to SPMU zoning for property located at 7347 Charlotte Pike to permit an office and retail development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 14, 2014Z 021PR 001. A request to rezone from R 10 to RS 10 zoning for various properties located on the east side of Nolansville Pike. Staff recommendation is to disapprove as submitted, approve with a substitute ordinance. Item number 15, 2014Z 036PR 001. A request to rezone from RS 20 to RS 30 zoning for properties located at 3914, 3916, 3920, 4002, 4004, 4008, 4010, 4016, and 4128 Wallace Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 16, 94P 02002, FedEx Ground. A request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for the commercial planned unit development overlay district located on a portion of property at 3301 Knight Drive, zoned IWD, to permit a 4,000-square-foot addition to the existing warehouse and an expansion to the existing parking lot. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And item number 22, to accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Mr. Chairman, before there's a motion on this, I need to make a note because I know the commission has had a number of inquiries regarding an item on the director's report. That includes the rehearing of the Vista Cluster Lot subdivision development. Under your rules, I have included in the director's report both the request as well as the finding of the planning director and the chairman on that. You also have in your packet a reminder from the attorney for the appellate in terms of requesting the rehearing. Just so you know, there is no action necessary on part of the commission from this point. However, if there is someone that would like to debate whether or not there is new information provided in that, there would need to be a motion made by a member of the commission. If that motion passes, then the item would be put at the next meeting to discuss whether or not to grant a rehearing. It's a two-step process at this point. There's a motion that would be required today to consider whether to hold a rehearing and then at your next meeting, a motion would have to be made, and that would have to be made by someone on the prevailing side and seconded by someone on the prevailing side to actually hold the rehearing, and then we would reschedule, schedule a rehearing in the subsequent date.
Can I ask a question?
Stuart?
So that's a rule we don't, I mean, it's in there and we seldom have to deal with it, but the motion today to put on for a future meeting, a rehearing, must be by a member of the commission who voted on the prevailing side before?
No, the motion today would be, if there's intent, the motion could be made by any commission member.
However they voted.
However they voted. And then at your next commission meeting, and an agenda item would be to actually consider the merits of whether or not there is new information provided by the applicant or the appellate in this case. And then if there is intent to rehear the item, that motion would have to be made and seconded by someone on the prevailing side.
When would be the time when you would ask whether there was such a motion? Oh, Mr. Chairman, when would that come?
I defer to council on that, whether we do it now, whether it be at the end when we hear the director's report.
You could go ahead and do it now if you wanted to, since the director has already, since the director has already announced that that is a part of the report, and we're technically on the consent agenda anyway, and this is a part of the consent agenda that you're already considering. So you can make, if you want to make a motion, certainly now would be the time to do it is an appropriate time. And that would just, again, that would just be a motion as to whether you would want this put on the agenda for further review.
But there's a, there could be a motion, second discussion, then a vote by the, all the commissioners as to whether that moves forward or not.
That's correct.
But is that, do we need to take care of the consent items first and then take that up?
It would probably be my recommendation that there's intent to discuss this, that you pull the director's report off of the consent agenda, and then you could discuss that at the end of the meeting when I present the director's report.
Okay. That'll work as well.
If you'd pull item 22 off the consent, and then items that will be on consent, then, Jennifer, correct me, is items one, four, 11, 14, 15, and 16.
That is correct.
And before, call for a motion to approve these and a second, and a vote, want to let the record show that I've recluse myself on this because I have conflict on two of the items. Is there a motion to approve the consent items? So move.
Second.
Motion second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items now have been approved by the commission and are, we'll move on then to the items to be on a public hearing. Have you made a decision on your deferral?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We are going to request a one-meeting deferral. I believe that will be June 5, next meeting.
Okay. Item five then has been requested to be deferred one meeting. Is there a motion? Second. Motion second to defer item five one meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed that has been deferred one meeting?
No one can hear you. It's a public hearing. We cannot hear you at all. Thank you.
Please use the microphone.
I'd like to suggest that we've been doing this a long time, and apparently we have some systemic problems because this is the first time this has ever happened. And I don't know if it's because of how many people are here and how many have to stand at the back of the room, but, and the talking that's out there and the ambient noise, but appreciate your desire to actually be heard, and we want to have that happen, but I don't mean to, it's, all of us have been heard at previous meetings, and I'm just hoping that everyone who's having maybe sidebar conversations can not do that because that may be part of what's going on here and not the fact that we're not speaking the way we normally do. I don't know.
No way you can say? Okay. Dwayne?
Okay. Item two is a request.
The Moss Road case, the Moss Road case has been deferred for one meeting at the request of the applicant.
The item, let me tell you, the members that's in the audience, there'll be a public hearing on items two, three, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12, and 17. All others have, business has been taken care of, and not five. Okay. Dwayne, go ahead.
Okay. Item two is a request to rezone property located at 1209 Montgomery Avenue. This is in East Nashville. The request is to rezone from single-family residential RS 5.
Jason, just a minute. Let me go ahead and speak and then stop, and let me see if they can hear you in the back.
Okay. The request is to rezone from single-family residential RS 5 to...
Can you hear Jason in the back?
Barely.
We just got a problem.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Two specific planned residential to permit up to two single-family dwelling units on a separate lot, or, I'm sorry, on a single lot. Staff is recommending that the request be disapproved. The request, the property is currently vacant. It is on the east side of Montgomery Avenue and is adjacent to the CSX tracks just south of Douglas Avenue. Here's a sight, a view of the site aerial. I believe the building has been removed since this aerial was taken. The zoning, again, is single-family residential. It would permit one single-family lot today.
Stop till we quit doing that, please.
This is the plan. It basically calls for two detached units to be permitted on the property. Access would be from Montgomery Avenue, and they would have parking at the front. The max floor area would be .6, ISR .7. The front setbacks called for would be consistent with the adjacent context, so would look at what's next door, and as you can see, it's, as shown, it's compatible with what's next door. It would permit a maximum height of two stories.
Yeah, I know. You're right.
It also has regulations regarding siding, floor elevations, and porches that is outlined in your staff report. This is a picture that was sent by the applicant, kind of representing the type of home they're thinking of building. The policy is single-family detached and neighborhood general. We have approved and recommended approval of similar projects in this type of policy. In those cases, they have always had alley access, so access was from the rear, and there was no parking at the front. In this case, the alley is not built, so access has, is only accessible from Montgomery. So, and that's the reason you have the situation that you have a parking pad in the front. And the policy recommends that properties that have less than 50-foot of frontage use alleys and have access from the rear, so it's, we find that it's not consistent with the policy. Therefore, staff is recommending disapproval of the request.
Applicant, be allowed 10 minutes, and you may hold two back for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to speak loudly. I'm Roy Dale. I'm representing the applicant on this, on this project. I think, you know, this, the... I think, you know, this, the, the staff had mentioned, the, I think the land use policy that's in place would allow you to, to put these two detached units. I think the problem that staff probably has is just the fact that it doesn't have alley access. As they'd mentioned before, they have approved other two lot detached units in this same scenario in the past. The parcel immediately to the north of this is actually in a more intense land use policy of mixed-use housing. Staff also mentioned something about access on lots that are less than 50 feet. This lot actually does have 50 feet. The photograph that I'd given staff, if you could go back to it, Jason, or, it shows a photograph of what's being proposed to be built, and you'll see a parking field in front of that particular unit, and that's more or less what this would look like. So, again, I think the real problem here is just that staff doesn't really like the fact that it, that it has, does not have an alley. If you look at the land use policy, this application and this particular use matches or meets all the critical goals that Planning has referenced before in the past on walkability, on infill development. I've had a community meeting with the Councilman, I think the Councilman is here to speak for a second or two. I'm just encouraging you to look at this as you have on properties in the past. This is a redeveloping area. There are lots adjacent and across the street from this that are basically 62 feet in width, but this subdivision that was approved in 1914 actually shows 31-foot wide lots. I met with Codes, and Codes basically said that those lots could be reestablished. So, in the future, you'll probably have 31-foot wide lots. Now, most of them will be off of alleys, but there will be about 20 or so of those that are not on alleys that will have access in the front. And I think that's really what this boils down to. So, I would ask you to consider that, listen to the Councilmember, I'll hold a couple of minutes just in case I need to rebut anything. I appreciate your opportunity to speak today, and I would ask you to support the, support this application. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor?
Can everyone hear me? Sorry. Can you hear me now? Can I get up to really close? Scott Davis, Councilmember of the 5th Congressional District of Metro Davidson County. Fellow Commissioners and former Councilmembers, thank you for volunteering your time and service. One thing I want to point out on this street, the property next door is a duplex. And one of the things with the housing on this street, you know, there's several multifamily units on this street because the density was needed, because right behind the property, Brother Swag, could you please go back to where it shows the railroad track right behind this property? And CSX, this is a very busy rail line that goes through Cleveland Park. And, and right there, when traditionally, when you would have houses that close to the railroad track, you know, you would have to have some kind of, some kind of stronger or bigger structure, because back a long time ago, the railroad used to shake those houses there. My grandmother used to live on that street, so I remember how her house would shake at times. It was torn down a while back, and it was not this property, but it was a property on that street also. And on Douglas and Montgomery, just across from this property, just further to the, I may, further to the east, there is a 27 multifamily unit approved by this body and by the Council because of being on Douglas and Montgomery and next to a railroad track. It called for higher density. The best thing, though, is, and could you go back to that last photo with the, how a lot used to look for, the applicant purchased it? A lot of you who know me know I have problems with people dumping trash on my vacant lots. And one of the reasons why I approve for this development right here is because constantly I call Codes, I bug a lot of you and a lot of my other Council folks when they have property owners where they're dumping on the, on the lots. And as a district council person, this gets on my nerves, and I know it gets on a lot of citizens' nerves, too. And so, when talking to the neighbors on that street and talking to the church across the street from this property, they felt very comfortable with the project because it was, A, better than what they're dealing with there, and the property to the, to the east of this is already a duplex, which is an older 70, 80-style brick duplexes that are attached. And they'd much rather see something, you know, that's not attached, but also keeping with that density. And those neighbors on that street prefer it, and I want to support them. And I understand why Planning doesn't really like that too much because of the not having alley in the back. Well, we couldn't have alley because of the railroad track there, but we need some sort of density, and maybe a solution of rezoning the whole street to allow a higher density due to that railroad track right there that constantly shakes. And I'm much willing to look at that. Also, if this Honorable Commission feels like they need to disapprove this, and I will respect that, I still love you all, even you, Stuart, and I will ask for the right to bring it back on, on, back on, back on for consideration, because there is some new information that we're trying to get from NES and other sources showing what this property used to look like, and also the demolition that occurred, to showing what this property used to be, to show and prove the density that was there. And I'd like to reserve the right, if need be, to speak after the opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? If you come to the microphone, please state your name and your address.
Thank you, Sarah Martin, 1020 Stainback Avenue. I'll begin with my more general comments regarding all applications of SP zoning that create what is essentially a detached duplex. Using SP zoning for this application to construct a detached duplex is really not in line with the purpose of SP zoning, in my opinion. In this case, SP zoning is merely being used to circumvent changing the base zoning, which in this particular sub-district, district, according to the detailed neighborhood design plan, is recommended to stay RS5. If the Councilman and the applicant wish to have something that is multifamily in this sub-district, they should rezon the entire street or apply for RS6 zoning for that parcel. I think that's more appropriate. Also, we've surveyed some neighborhood residents, and overwhelmingly, no one supports parking in the front, in the front yard of any parcel. That's really all I have. I've also heard that there was some discussion about SP zoning actually being used when it was approved for a similar circumstance in McFerrin Park to set a precedent for other situations like this, and in my opinion, that's not really a specific plan. A specific plan is specific for a specific parcel, so it doesn't set a precedent. So, I just ask the Commission to take some of those things into consideration. We're not overwhelmingly in support or in opposition of developments like this. I think it kind of depends on each circumstance so far, according to the residents we've talked to, so I just ask that you all take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Brett Withers. I live at 1113 Granada Avenue in East Nashville. My objection, I would echo the objection of Ms. Martin from the Cleveland Park Neighborhood Association. At the very last Planning Commission hearing, there was a similar application to circumvent the RS zoning to put in a detached duplex in Council District 6. The neighbors showed up in opposition to that. The Commissioners had a pretty vigorous debate about what was the appropriate use of specific plans and whether this would be spot zoning. The Commissioners, after a debate, ultimately decided to go ahead and uphold the rezoning request. However, what's concerning to some of us in those neighborhoods is that it was mentioned in the deliberations that the SP, SPs that have happened in other districts are capable of being used as a precedent to enact these, these types of rezonings in other districts. And honestly, that's what's concerning to me. If this Councilmember and his constituents are, happen to be okay with this type of an SP on this specific parcel, that's one thing, but if that, if there's nothing specific to this parcel, if this parcel is like any other parcel, and that's going to be used as an excuse to overcome the will of constituents countywide, I think that's a matter of concern. So, I would submit that to the Commissioners for your consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, applicant has two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll try to slow down this time. I think specific plan zoning is exactly what you would use on a piece of property like this. To say you would go rezon a whole block to R to allow duplexes would pretty much not provide you any ability to control architectural compatibility. Every house could provide access to the street. The land use policy for this area is single-family and neighborhood general. This is detached. These are detached units. These are single-family units. This application meets the critical goals of the land use policy. Again, I think it just boils down to the access. I don't think staff indicated at all that this didn't conform to the land use policy, so it's just a matter of preference. There's not much that we can do about that, the fact that we don't have an alley. We can do a shared access, which is shown on this plan. The lot is not less than 50 feet, it is 50 feet, it's something that you'll see many times, probably in this area. I think this is something that you've approved before. In addition, this specific plan also provides a lot of the architectural requirements that you've talked about in your contextual overlays. We're controlling height, controlling width, controlling materials, controlling the amount of glazing. All of that's a part of this specific plan, which would not be a part of a base zoning. So, a specific plan is exactly what you need. It does provide single-family detached units on a developing area. You're going to see this develop more and more. This, I foresee, to be developing similar to the nation's, in that you do have small lots that can be reestablished, 31-foot wide lots, mostly, again, on alleys, some will not be, and they will have access to the street. So, I would ask that you support this proposal. The Councilmember clearly supports the zone change, and I would ask for you to make a recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I declare the public hearing closed. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question, I guess, to staff about the, the parking pad in the front. Is there anywhere else in the neighborhood that has a, I think that's what concerns me the most, is the parking. It seems like you're almost parking on the grass.
I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of where anything right around it. There is a church across the street that would have parking on it, but if you, let's see if I can get this thing to move. So, this is looking down the street from the Douglas side. So, you can see there are driveways, there's also on-street parking, so, I mean, with the driveway going towards the back of the lot, of course, you could park along that driveway, but it's not, you know, taking up the whole front of the, of the yard, and that's looking back from the south. So, I mean, as far as parking in the driveway, you would be at the front.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll listen to the other Commissioners. I guess the parking in the front kind of concerns me, but I do see a couple of folks parking in the front on some of these lots over here. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen to the other Councilmembers.
Andre?
I'd like to listen, too.
I think Mr. Dale makes, makes a good point that if, that if you're gonna rezon this, it might make some sense to use specific plan zoning, but the community is not required to rezon it. That's the problem I think you have here with this case. We all know that density has its admirers and detractors, it's kind of a case-by-case thing, but I think the staff was quite sound in what they recommended. I think we don't really want to have park, parking pads and small front yards, and I'll be supporting the staff recommendation.
Better?
At the last meeting, I, on a similar case, I asked if the SP was an appropriate tool for a situation like this, and I guess I'd like to ask the staff, outside of what's in our, our, the staff report, in terms of the, the purpose of the specific plan residential, is there any more language in the ordinance regarding the purpose outside of what's spelled out here?
Well...
Yeah, there's, there's, is there anything in specific that you're trying to address? Well, I guess, in the past, SPs have been used for a number of purposes, but often for exceptional design ideas, for things that our typical zoning ordinance wouldn't allow. And, you know, you know, things that are exceptional and might be considered unique, whether it's due to certain site constraints, certain opportunities on the site, and so on. And, again, I question, given that we have legislation that calls for single-family detached on, you know, lots of a certain size, that this wouldn't meet otherwise, why, you know, I question whether this is spot zoning, for one thing, but it just seems to be, to, and I'll say it again from what I said last time, that by stating this, we're essentially suggesting that this whole neighborhood, this could be appropriate on any lot in this neighborhood, because there's nothing unique about this lot. You could say that it doesn't have an alley. Well, that sort of hurts its case, as the staff has, has pointed out. And so, I, I maintain by using the SP as a tool for this on a standard lot to try to get two units on a single-family lot is, you know, we might as well rezon the entire district if that's what we want. And we like density, and that's appropriate in places, and that's not necessarily what we're here to debate, the entire area, but, so I'm gonna support staff recommendation as well.
Rick, do you have an answer to his question?
Right, the, the specific plan specifically states, "It's an alternative zoning district, zoning process that may permit any land uses, mixture of land uses, and alternative development standards as may be required to address the unique circumstances of an individual property through a specific site plan. In return, the SP district requires specific, site-specific plan to be designed such that at a minimum, location, integration, arrangement of land uses, buildings, structures, utilities, access, transit, parking, and streets collectively avoid monotony, promote variety, and yield a context-sensitive development." I think that what the staff was mainly concerned about was that by having a large parking pad in the front, it doesn't meet, it doesn't meet those requirements.
Lily?
Sure. I would like to echo Hunter's concerns about using the SP tool for this, and also, obviously, much of the problem with this was the, or at least a lot of what was talked about with this was the lack of the alleyway in the back. And although there's obviously a rationale for there not being an alleyway, namely, the railroad being back there, it does create a situation that does not seem to be in keeping with the neighborhood, and you have this parking pad in front, which leads me to support the staff's recommendation for disapproval.
Phil?
Jason, I want to clarify something. Would you go back to the line drawing of the, yes, there? Where you see the 17-foot marker on the back there?
Okay.
Just north of that, is that an alley or a potential alley?
It's an unbuilt alley, so an alley could be built, but it's just right away.
Ah, so. I mean, it could, if there wa, if it was an alley, would they have room to get in there where it says 17 feet?
Yes.
So, if the developer wanted to open that up and develop it as an alley, could he do that?
I mean, he could, but I, I don't think that'd be feasible, because you would have to build quite a long length of alleyway for two, two units. I mean, yes, he could do it, but it wouldn't work.
Okay. Just curious, all right, I still agree with staff.
Walter?
Yes, I was just thinking about the, the pad and the driveways, if you should go back to that, where you have driveways going into the street. This one that they built, would they have the driveways, it's kind of similar to what's out there now, or will they just create a concrete pad? I'm trying to determine what is the difference between what they got now and what's been proposed.
Now, if you see, go back, I don't know if I have one straight up, but it's, you know, a normal, a typical driveway that runs towards the back of the property, it has to start at the street, so you could park anywhere on that length of driveway, but it takes you all the way to the back, and so you still have a front yard. In this case, in this case, the driveway is centered to the two units, and then the front- In this case, the driveway is centered to the two units, and then the front yard is parking. So here's the driveway apron, and then... So here's your front yard, and this will be all parking. So it's basically creating a parking lot in the front yard.
Okay, that answered my question, but that's not a good look, so I will have to support the...
This is, just for the commission, this is a... Would be a good piece of property to have a front house with a rear parking and an accessory unit in the back where you had two units. In this circumstance, that would probably fit in something. There's other designs that would work on this, but not this particular one.
And for that, I will support the staff recommendation.
Is there a motion?
A motion to approve staff recommendation.
Motion second to approve staff recommendation. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ready for item number three.
Item number three is a similar request. It is a request to rezonate property located at 1102 Joseph Avenue in East Nashville. Property is outlined in red. This is just to the east of Dickerson Pike and north of Eviston Avenue. It's adjacent to a commercial limited zoning district to the west. I'm sorry. And the request is to rezonate to SP permit one single-family unit that's permitted to date or a detached two-family dwelling. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. Zoning, again, is RS5, which would permit one single-family unit. The proposed... The proposal is to permit detached duplex access. In this case, there is an alley. It would permit... You could also do one single-family lot as today, able to limit the height to two stories and 29 feet at the front setback with a maximum of 35 feet. It would require that the setbacks be consistent with the adjacent setbacks, so you would take the average of the two adjacent properties. These are elevations that were given by the applicant. It requires that the units be detached. It requires that they meet all building and fire code. Requires primary entrances onto the street. 25% glazing for windows. No EFS. Also requires ground floor porches and requires a minimum depth of six feet with... For the porches. In this case, the policy is mixed housing and neighborhood general. This policy supports all types of residential, including single-family, two-family, as well as multifamily. In this case, this property is located adjacent to a busy corridor of Dickerson. It's also directly behind a commercial zone property and has an alley. So in this case, the policy supports it, and in looking at the area, it's an appropriate addition as far as density at this location, given its proximity to Dickerson Pike and it's adjacent to commercial property. And these are conditions that are outlined already that the applicant has agreed to, that you just previously saw. And in conclusion, staff is recommending approval with conditions, as the request is consistent with the land use policy.
Thank you. Silence open for public hearing. Applicant bill out in 10 minutes, and you may keep two back for rebuttal.
Thank you. I'm Roy Dale with Dale &amp; Associates. I hope this is a much easier project. This is mixed housing in the land use policy, so like Jason had mentioned, it allows a variety of residential type of uses, attached, detached. This does have an alley in the back, which the access will be off the alley. Immediately to the... Adjacent to and to the rear of this site is a community center. It's basically commercial. So this is pretty much an ideal location for an infill-type development, a single-family detached. You'll notice on the photograph, there's actually a lot adjacent to it, although that looks like a garage. It's really like a mother-in-law apartment. So it more or less has two units on it immediately adjacent to and to the south of this site. This is probably that I've learned a little bit of a lesson. This was on consent last week, or two weeks ago, and of course, it's on consent today, but no good deed goes unpunished. You know, I had a community meeting, and I think as a result of that, that's brought up a little higher level of scrutiny, and that's okay. I mean, that's... We want to have as many community meetings as possible, and I think as a result of that, that probably raised a lot of questions. People don't understand the planning and zoning process a lot of times, and it's good for us to have these meetings within the community. So staff clearly supports this. It's a great location. I think all of Joseph Street will probably redevelop soon. There are a lot of vacant parcels there. Hopefully, in the future, someone may actually acquire two or three parcels and do some other type of infill development, you know, to provide some variety on this street like the policy suggests or endorses. So, again, I hope this is a little bit easier for you to understand. I certainly understand your debate on the last project. I've actually talked to the council member about making some changes on that. I think that's why he was suggesting he may bring that back. But on this one, I think it's fairly straightforward. These are two detached units with alley access to the rear and an area where the policy supports it, adjacent to commercial. It's an ideal infill site. Thank you.
I'll hold two minutes, just in case.
You've got it, to be sure. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in support?
Okay, if I could get permission to put some ice on my wound from the earlier meeting, you know, but I appreciate the RS6 recommendation, though. As what the planning commission has spoken, that this is a... This is an area designed for multifamily and for this sort of use. However, though, as a good council member, I do listen to my neighbors, and I did ask for it to be pulled off of the consent agenda last time, be deferred, and it's back on again. I've talked to the neighbor that has the multi-unit on that end, and I've gotten his blessing, and I do reserve the right to amend and make the necessary changes. He's asking for a very nice fence to divide the property so that, in case the neighbors aren't good neighbors, that they can leave him alone, and they can leave him alone, too. Also, what I'm going to bring back is a proposal to allow on this street some mother-in-law housing, because a couple of streets over, we have the same thing, which was done before the district was rezoned to RS. And I would like to thank the planning commission and the commissioners for their hard work in this process. And also, we're going to add some... A little bit of green space, because the two houses next door to this wanted a tree at it, because when the city... When we knocked down the house, because it was a bad house, and, you know, we took down the nice tree that was there, I told them it may not be as big, but the applicant has agreed to put the tree back, and he's also going through some other designs. Some of the neighbors on the street have gone to see the other similar homes and are built in Lachland and also built in historic Germantown. They liked the designs. They have some material suggestions, which I can put in the SP also and amend it so that my neighbors are happy. And once again, I can also require a fence. And also, I am looking at extending that privilege of that mother-in-law suite type to the rest of the neighbors and other neighbors in the district. And I want to thank Mr. Bernhardt for his hard work and the rest of you for doing that, and Walter Hunt for being the co-sponsor and the main sponsor for the bill. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Saying none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, again, commissioners. My name's Brett Withers, 1113 Granada Avenue. Really, my main complaint, again, is the same one that I had last time. I get that when you're doing a rezoning in an area like this, it's good to have an SP from the standpoint of having some controls over what the structure will look like. Again, the concern that I have is that if this SP is going to be used as a precedent for rezoning other properties that may or may not be in a detailed neighborhood design plan that suggests quite a bit more density. There have been numerous similar SP rezonings, not only in District 5, but now spreading into District 6, and that has been cited as a precedent, and that is mainly what's concerning to me. I agree with my esteemed neighboring council member, Davis, that having mother-in-law apartments is great. I think that if density were going to go in a creative manner, that he would put in a mother-in-law apartment or a detached accessory dwelling, which would be possible under an SP. What's being proposed is not anything near that creative and does not forward the goals of affordable housing. It appears that the house that was demolished was... The land was purchased this year for $27,000. So clearly, there's not an economic hardship on this lot that would require putting in two massive homes. Also, the home that was demolished was 1,023 square feet. Again, I think that really what you're getting is more of the same. And my esteemed neighboring council member, Davis, references houses in the Lachlan Springs area. As someone who lives in Lachlan Springs and Eastwood neighbors, I can tell you that these buildings have caused such outrage that there is a mass rush to put in conservation zoning overlays specifically to ban this type of housing. So I wouldn't use that as a selling point. But again, my main concern is with the precedent that this was set. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Saying none, you've got two minutes for rebuttal.
I'm enjoying my time with you here today. As staff had recommended on this, I just... I think that we've had enough discussion on this, but clearly, this is a piece of property. Actually, I think this lot is actually sort of a larger-sized lot, as a matter of fact, and I think that would help you in looking at putting two units on this property. But the policy encourages that. It is adjacent to commercial. It has alley access. As on the other proposal, we've added all the sort of the contextual type amendments to this to ensure that the building has a... It's not too high or not too wide, or that it conforms with what's around it, that it has ports, that it has proper materials, that, you know, all the good things that y'all came up with and have recommended to council on these future possible overlays. So, again, staff has recommended approval. This was a consent item. I would hope that you would support the staff's recommendation and the council member and recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I declare the public hearing closed. Walter?
I like to reserve my time. No comments right now.
Philip?
For all the reasons we didn't approve the previous one, this one should be approved. Thank you.
Lilly?
Just to echo what Phil said, this is obviously a different situation than the last one that we were presented with. We obviously do have alleyway access, and you are in a situation where you're actually right next door to a lot where there are two buildings on there, so it doesn't... Definitely does not stand out as dramatically as the previous property did.
Hunter?
I agree with the previous commissioners and the staff, which makes me rethink my comment earlier about whether this SP is a good tool for this. I think the... You know, well, it's... It was a question, not a statement necessarily. So perhaps it could be a good tool if you look at certain locations where higher density makes sense, where the policy supports it, where it has the infrastructure, such as the alleys, sidewalks, and so on, to support higher density, where you've got commercial zoning right behind it, and this area would be a great transition. And ultimately, very well could be, you know, that whole street could be rezoned. I could see a good... A case for that to a higher density as a transition from the commercial corridor. So I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
Stewart?
I want to insert my other commissioners further down this line, but I would... I support the staff recommendation and would venture a motion to approve.
Motion second. Greg, any other comments? Second motion. Andre?
No comment.
Okay, got a motion second to approve staff recommendations. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
Number seven. Must be complicated, my friend. Oh, it is. I don't like to know about it.
Do you staff presenter?
I'm presenting item number six. I'm filling in for Carrie. She's unavailable tonight, so y'all have to excuse me if I'm not as smooth in presenting as she is. This is a...
It's item number seven.
I'm sorry. Item number seven. I already messed up right out of the gate. It's a zoning text.
I do it at every meeting, so don't be... Don't feel alone.
I'll go as quick as I can. It is a zoning text amendment. The Cultural Heritage Overlay District, specifically, it's called the Music City Cultural Heritage Overlay District. This overlay district would cover the areas along Broadway from Fifth to First Avenue and then along First and Second Avenues from Broadway up to Church. It also includes a portion of Printer's Alley from Church to Union. Staff's recommendation is to remove the parcels that are along... That actually face along Union, as shown in this block here, and also that face out towards Fourth and Third. The Music City Cultural Heritage Overlay District, as I said, applies to this specific area. I'd also point out that it only applies to the ground-level portions of these lots. Most structures... Most of the structures in the overlay are already covered by the historic overlay for the same area along Broadway and First and Second Avenues, although Printer's Alley does not have that same historic overlay, and there is a block between Second and Third that does... Currently doesn't have the overlay on it, but it's part of an SP. The idea behind this particular overlay is to protect the culture of the area and the strong ties that this particular area has to Music City and the identity that we've created as a community for this area. The uses that will be permitted inside this overlay are the same uses that are permitted under the DTC. Additionally, I want to point out that it doesn't cover the upper floors. The upper floors would be able to be used for any of the purposes that the DTC would permit. The unique characteristics in particular that are trying to be protected here are the performance venues that we have all along Broadway and Printer's Alley and Second Avenue, as well as the retail cells that we have in the area that support the character of the district, as well as the... Sure you're all familiar with the restaurants, the bars, and, as I mentioned, the performance venues. What it's trying to protect against are formula uses, which a lot of people would consider as chain establishments. The first criteria that we would point out of the uses that are trying to be prohibited are uses where there are 11 or more of the same establishments. That would be, again, a chain establishment that we're talking about. So if you... We would use McDonald's as an example, that if you're a McDonald's, then you can't... You wouldn't be able to come into the... This district and use your standard formula that you use. And the standard formula items that we're talking about, trying to discourage for the area, are the... Where you offer the same array of merchandise, your facade is standardized, decor, color scheme, uniform apparel, standardized signage, trademark, and service mark. But the requirement would be that you could not have two or more of these. Again, using McDonald's as an example, you could still use your standard trademark emblem, but your facade, your interior, the way that you present your business to the public would have to be different. But you could still have that establishment in the area. It just would have to fit in to the feel that Broadway and First and Second Avenues and Printer's Alley have developed over the years. Several of the cities adopted ordinances that are similar to this, that seek to protect the unique characters of those community. This overlay in particular was partially modeled after one that's in San Francisco, and the one in San Francisco seeks to protect local businesses that are... That are unique to the different neighborhoods within San Francisco. The zoning administrator has already approved this, as well as the staff has recommended approval.
Anybody in support?
If you have any questions, I'm happy to take those.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a...
Sure.
How long has this proposal been looked at? How long... I just heard... How long, I just heard about it very recently.
Well, it came up recently. We were approached by the Convention and Visitors Bureau with their interest in trying to protect this area. And so it's only been a few weeks that we've had the opportunity to look at it, but as I said, what we did was, we researched other cities that have common protection for areas within those cities that are unique.
So, so the, this would be a first in Tennessee, I guess. I don't think I've heard of that.
I'm unfamiliar with any others in Tennessee.
Did it done?
Unless there are further questions.
The public hearing, see if there's any audience in support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Sean Henry, 315 Dedrick Street. My law partner, Tom White, and I are representing the Nashville Convention and Visitors Corporation, also known as the Bureau, the CBB. And Tom's here, and he's available to speak and answer any questions if necessary. We would like to reserve a few moments for rebuttal. I think we should have 10 minutes on the clock as the applicant, so.
I guess the question is, are they the applicant? That's, that didn't...
Well, we were co-sponsors. They paid for the signs, they paid for the notices, and they're the ones that approached us about it.
I accepted him as applicant, so you'll be allowed 10 minutes to hold, two for rebuttal.
Thank you, and I believe there's really only two of us to speak here on behalf of the applicant, Butch Spiriton will follow me. In 2009, this planning commission adopted the downtown community plan, and I'd like to just read a couple of sentences from that. This is on page 72. "The second and Broadway neighborhood is the historic and cultural heart of Nashville. It is a destination for residents and visitors, offering a variety of entertainment and dining options. It is home to many famous venues. The intent of the community plan is to maintain the low-scale pedestrian-friendly historic character of the second and Broadway neighborhood while accommodating a mix of uses that is predominantly entertainment venues with some residential retail and office." The, this particular bill, this overlay implements that plan, so that's important, point number one. Regarding its effort, Commissioner, respectfully, the area of downtown Nashville, the lower Broad area, the Second Avenue area, and Printer's Alley are unique to the state of Tennessee. And our city leaders, particularly the CBC, has done a very good job and made a very smart investment in branding Music City as, branding Nashville as Music City. So that Music City brand is no more obvious than down on Lower Broadway and these areas. We must protect that brand. The importance of protecting that brand during this time of our city's national and international trajectory and popularity is a critical time, and we need not become the victim of our own success. Without this overlay, there is a very high likelihood that the uniqueness of the entertainment district will become eroded, will become diluted, if standardized commercial branding is allowed to come in to the district. Importantly, this bill does not prevent any particular national chain from locating anywhere in this corridor. And there's plenty of areas just outside of these frontages of Second Avenue, Printer's Alley, and Broadway in which a national chain could certainly locate. And even if they choose to locate within this district, they can comply, as Mr. Sloan just pointed out. There's, there's elements that they can comply with. So it's important, though, that if they're going to come in, they need to respect the brand that is Music City, and they can do so by abiding by any formula use that would apply. We recognize, as Councilwoman Gilmore stated, that there's probably a need to make some adjustments to the bill, and that will be done through the legislative process, and we're going to participate in that effort. But I don't think anyone can disagree with the spirit and the intent of this bill. This bill is intended to preserve and protect what makes downtown Nashville so vibrant, so special, and so desirable. And so we ask that this commission support it. There are some letters of support that we'd like to offer up. We've got a packet, I'll hand it out during the next speaker, but we've got a letter of support from Ron Goble, who owns property downtown, Goble Haste Partners, his business is downtown, as well as Rhonda Marco, who is with Destination Nashville. She's the president and CEO, and for 20 years has been bringing convention delegates into downtown Nashville. And time and time again, they comment that we love coming back to downtown Nashville, and it's because of this cultural heritage, which is the district, the entertainment district. And so Ron and I serve on the nonprofit, the district downtown together, and that group has weighed in on this as well. So I'll let Mr. Spiriton speak, and we'll rebut anything that we need to, if we may. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean indicated, I'm Butch Spiriton, president and CEO of the Nashville Convention and Visitors Corporation. Thank you all for giving me a few minutes. Really, it would be important to start by saying, we don't have a financial interest. We have one agenda, and that is the interest of the city. The city, in reality, is our client. And the city, or the area is attractive because of what the city has invested in this area. And we have built, really, an unprecedented level of success by media coverage, by hotel tax collections, by just the 12 million visitors that are now coming here to spend the night. We built that success on a brand of authenticity and uniqueness, along with our southern hospitality and our music. We offer something that no other city offers. Disney can't do this. Vegas can't do this. Miami can't do this. Even New Orleans can't do what we are doing and have been doing. So it's not about any one business. It's about taking a look at where we are, and how do we make sure that we continue our level of success and don't begin to look like many other cities. Many times I refer to what's happening in this country as the homogenization of America's cities. So far, to a reasonable degree downtown, we've been able to hold out. Second Avenue, Lower Broad, Printer's Alley offer some really unique offerings. And we need to do what we can to protect and preserve, really protect ourselves. If we don't control our own destiny, pretty certain, I can think about what will happen and what this will look like in five years. And recently told the business editor at the Tennessean that I would expect an article in about three years chewing me out, asking what happened, and laying the blame at our feet. We can't really predict what will happen in the future, but if we think about the past, it's the only place we really have to look, look at. The city, for decades, relied on one company to carry this industry. And we did pretty well. Then when the company changed courses and closed the theme park, we all panicked, and we all went, what happened and why? And then we spent the last 15 years, 16 years rebuilding. We rebuilt beyond anybody's expectations. And so when we look at things like that, we have the opportunity to take control of our own destiny. And then when we look at what I would call chains instead of formula businesses, you only have to think back to when O'Charley's and McDonald's were on Second Avenue, and it didn't work. And Church Street Center offered the same thing everybody else offered, and it didn't work. Right now, we have what nobody else offers, and it's working. So I would ask you all to approve this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. You do have two minutes for rebuttal, so. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in support? You want to speak in support, please come to the microphone.
Adam Listor with the National Chamber. We actually am kind of in that gray area between support and oppose, and you all haven't called folks up for that yet today. So we actually do not, excuse me, do not have a position on this proposal at this time, but just wanted for the record to say that we appreciate Councilman Gilmore and the opportunity that she's providing for businesses and organizations to have some further discussion on the issue, so we can really dive deeper into the concept and make sure we're not getting into any unintended consequences that may come from, from a proposal like this without some really deep thoughtful conversations. So just wanted to make sure we got that on the record for you all, but I wanted to also state that at this point, we don't have a position on this particular proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bill Reynolds with a Dream Come True Events and Catering. We've been catering Nashville, 26-year-old company. We just had our first profitable winter ever in the history of the world, and it was because of the Music City Center and Nashville's Music City theme that we're talking about right now, and the gray area that we're talking about right now, having spinoff from Music City Center, events and catering from conventions that are people out of town, coming, wanting to involve themselves and their guests and their parties in this area that we're talking about. So I am definitely in favor of keeping Music City Nashville flavor the way it is as we're talking about here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barrett Hobbs. I am an operator of six businesses, either on Broadway or the Second Avenue area, and I would really, really like to stress my feelings and the importance of the passage of this bill. As Butch pointed out earlier, my family was in the development across the street from the Opryland Theme Park, so I've got a firsthand knowledge, growing up, of what happens when you put your destiny literally at the footprint across from major corporations. I think if you look back through the 50s, 60s, and 70s in this very area, most of it was controlled by regional or national retail stores. And then the economic climate changed, and they moved. They didn't care about Nashville. They packed up and left. And then it was dilapidated for years and years and years, and it wasn't corporations that came back and built it. It was Nashvilleans. It was folks that re-energized Tootsie's, began the stage, owners that invested on Second Avenue. None of them were big corporations, at least the vast majority of them weren't. They were regular folks, and for the most part, those folks are still here. And so as Nashville has exploded, and everybody in the country, we're now on the radar screen, I don't think that we need to just bow down and say, well, we've worked our butts off for 20 years to get this thing where it is. Now you guys just come in and, you know, take the icing off the top of the cake. And my biggest fear is that if we don't control this area, large corporations will, if they're allowed to come in, will hurt the independents. And now that our real estate prices are so high, once those small mom-and-pop stores are taken out, it'll open the door up for more and more corporations. So I really hope you'll help us and support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Tom Turner, president and CEO of the Nashville Downtown Partnership. In 2007, partnership commissioned a comprehensive retail strategy for downtown Nashville by Downtown Works, which is a component of Economic Research Associates. And the partnership hired a retail recruiter in 2008 to implement the retail strategy. In 2012, in conjunction with a strategic master plan for south of Broadway, the Silver Master Plan, Downtown Works updated the 2007 retail strategy. And again, they specifically referenced the optimal merchandising mix for Broadway. Lower Broadway has a distinctive identity recognized by visitors from all over the world. These few blocks, more than any other in Nashville, embody what makes this Music City. The downtown Nashville retail strategy recommends food and entertainment uses for Broadway, Second Avenue, and Printer's Alley. And the merchandising mix also includes creative music and artistic-related retail, instrument shops, music stores, and other uses uniquely Nashville. The appeal of Lower Broadway, Second Avenue, and Printer's Alley is based on authenticity. If the retail mix is altered, the well-established character of these streets will be lost. This overlay is designed to protect the cultural heritage of this unique area, and accordingly, the Nashville Downtown Partnership supports the cultural heritage overlay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for allowing us this few minutes to speak to you on this subject. My name is Brenda Sanderson. My husband and I and our family own four of the music venues on Lower Broadway. I know some of you have been to some of those places, and you know how important they are to the culture of this city. And that's why we are certainly in favor of the overlay and hope that you folks will vote to help us maintain what we have there on Lower Broadway. We're also property owners. We also own another business there that houses a retail dress shop, and the name of the store is Tatiana Designs. And even though to some it may look like a chain store, it is not. It's a, it's a one-owner operation, and they cater to the type of audience and the musicians that we have down there. So they, they are the exact kind of the retail establishment that can come in there and participate in the kind of culture we have. In fact, one of their designs is on display right now with the Miranda Lambert display at the Country Music Hall of Fame. So we're about honky-tonks, boots, and barbecue, and things that are Nashville, and we appreciate it if you consider passing this overlay for our area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us speak to you. My name is Phil Martin. I live and invest money and own businesses on Printer's Alley and Second Avenue, and borrow millions to do so. In this investment, I have encouraged others to do so, and everybody is very, very excited about what's happening in downtown Nashville. We might have disagreements, but we all work together to attract, entertain our valuable visitors. We make money as a result of this, but only because of the wonderful and unique time visitors have that keeps them coming back and telling their friends. That experience is valuable, and we must protect it. I want to thank you all for your service, and please help us protect downtown Nashville.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing. Please, if anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please line up the microphone.
I am Charlie Robyn. I'm the broker of Robyn Realty Company, and my office has been on Second Avenue at 125, 127, 125, 127 Second Avenue for over 35 years. I do have some concerns about the proposed overlay. The overlay provides that new businesses within the district would either have, to have a stage or sell products that are mainly related to Nashville's cultural heritage. I believe this is too restrictive. I have walked Second Avenue and Broadway, and I've put together a list of 45 existing businesses. I do have a copy of this list to give each one of you, and the reasons why these businesses would be disallowed if they tried to come in and relocate or locate in this market today. For example, Mike's Ice Cream has no entertainment venue. They have 1,250 square feet on the ground floor, and if you put a stage in there and make music and entertainment, there's not going to be much room for selling ice cream. And if you ever walk by his store and see it, it's pretty busy during all day and night hours normally. Betty Page has 17 stores nationwide. They have standard size and color schemes. The Tin Roof has 13 locations with standard sign, standard merchandise, and trademark. Merchant's Restaurant has no live entertainment. Rock Bottom has 30 locations in the United States. They have standard signs, uniformed signs, and no live entertainment that I'm aware of. The Hard Rock Cafe has way too many restaurants and locations to be welcomed back on Broadway or Second Avenue if they wanted to come and locate there today. Gordon Hack Company. I'm very proud of Gordon Hack Company. I don't know if you've been in there or not. We have very few retail and clothing stores downtown. The Downtown Partnership has always made it very important to try to bring retail down there. It's 650 square feet. How do you put a stage in there and a live venue? I know my time's running out. It was over. I'd like to, if I could go over just a moment, please.
You're over, you're out of gated time.
The only first-floor uses allow for entertainment and venue or retail. This restricts clothing stores, coffee shops, sandwich shops, ice cream stores, candy shops. I'm concerned that this was way too restrictive, and it's going to prevent a lot of businesses to come down here that want to. And not everybody's going to sell beer or have live entertainment. It just doesn't happen that way in entertainment areas. I'd love to give you all a pop- I'd love to give you all a copy...
Just give that to the staff.
... of these businesses. And I've even listed the reasoning why these businesses...
If you'd give those to the staff, they'll hand them out to the Commissioners.
Thank you. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Oh, hi, everyone. My name's Lance Bloom. I'm a property owner on Lower Broadway. And I think everyone here could agree that Lower Broadway is rocking right now. And it's a great thing to have for the city, to bring people into town. And some of the reasons why it is rocking right now are restaurants and venues like Margaritaville, Hard Rock Cafe, Betty Page Clothing, American Apparel, Rock Bottom Brewery, Tin Roof, Savannah's Candy Kitchen, and Merchants. And all of those people on Broadway wouldn't be able to put a store right now if this ordinance was in place. I enjoy being on Lower Broadway. I'm a commercial real estate broker, and I walk those streets every day. And one of the great things about Lower Broadway is there's adult entertainment options, like Tootsie's at night and Ripley's at night. I know, I don't know if I'd want my eight-year-old going in there at 11:00 p.m., but I sure wouldn't mind them going into maybe Margaritaville and having a blow-up balloon, or going to Hard Rock Cafe, or Merchants for some of their french fries. I think it's important to have diversity on Lower Broadway. And I've grown up here all my life, and I remember the Wendy's and the McDonald's on Second Avenue, and how they came and went. And they didn't go because there was an ordinance that banned them from coming, or not allowing them to come. They banned, or they left, because financially, they just couldn't make it. Because the people that come down here are going to vote with their cash, and the cash goes to the stores that are on Lower Broadway now. And thank goodness, they're all great locations, including these corporate users now. So I would just ask everyone here to just consider that even though they're a corporate store, and even though they've got standardized signing, they've all played a great part in the reason why Lower Broadway is viable, because you have family entertainment and adult entertainment, and that comes in all varieties. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Seth Harlan. I'm a downtown resident and employee. I work with Robyn Realty Company. I'm a broker there. I have the good fortune to be part of a fourth-generation business. It's been on Second Avenue. It's an office on the ground floor. It's been there for over 30 years, and I feel like it's as much a part of Nashville as anything on Second Avenue or Broadway. My understanding of this ordinance is that the uses for the ground floor are limited to an entertainment venue or to retail. So an office would not be allowed. God forbid something happened to the building that we're in, the space that we're in, but we would not be able to move across the street next door somewhere else on Second Avenue to have a ground-floor office. And it's very unique to our business to be able to be downtown and have a ground-floor office space where our clients can come in, where people can come in off the street and ask us about real estate in Nashville. If we were on a second floor, a third floor, we would not have the same situation. I also want to echo the statement that businesses like McDonald's, like O'Charley's, like Wendy's that were downtown, they came down here, and the market determined whether or not they would succeed. It wasn't an ordinance. It was economics. It was rent. It was people that came in and patronized those places. It's the market that should determine what uses are there rather than an overlay. And I'm very much in support of something that wants to keep Nashville what it is in terms of protecting our facades, our signs, that sort of thing. But something that restricts the use is a terrible thing to Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, you have 52 minutes for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, my name is Tom White, along with my law partner, Sean Henry, represent the applicant. I want to make a couple of things very clear. One is that every use on the areas in question would be legally grandfathered in. Nobody, nobody is put out of business with this. They're all legally grandfathered in. That's just a legal prerequisite we need to deal with first. The second is, we're going to hand this to the staff, but the study's been done. Eighty-two percent of the properties between First and Fifth on Broad already comply with this. Those that are not are going to be legally non-conforming. I'll mention key things for this commission. This commission's got a totally vested interest in this. We would not be here today, wouldn't have the success in the downtown Broad area were it not for this commission. 2006, 2009, this commission looked and made certain recommendations for the downtown plan. Again, we wouldn't have the success were it not for this commission stepping up and doing that, which wasn't that popular at the time. There was opposition to it. But the staff recommended it, this commission stepped up and enacted it, or there wouldn't be a Lower Broadway that we're now talking about. This is not the French Quarter, it's not Charleston, it's Nashville, it's the Music City brand. But then the downtown code was enacted in 2010. Again, some controversies about this. This commission stepped up, he supported it. All those actions clearly show the commitment by this commission to this process. I'll also mention, too, that Council Lady Gilmore has made it very clear there will be additional meetings that will take place on this. We've committed to that. We'll have any number of meetings with people as it goes through the council process, whatever it takes, including a deferral at that level if important. Finally, we all remember the comment about, you know, "You think globally, but you act locally." This is the absolute personification of that right here. There's been all kinds of companies that have come and gone from this community, but as Barrett Hobbs said, the people that put their blood, sweat, and tears and turned this area around are locals, and clearly they ought to be protected in this interest. We urge you to approve this today, send it on to the council as a legislative body, and it will continue to be met with. Thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you. I declare the public hearing closed. What have you got? Just give that to the staff. Andre?
I was interested in some of the details, I guess, maybe that, I don't know if we want to discuss them all tonight. I'm not sure quite. But one of my, some of my questions were, I was looking at how many parcels and landowners were affected, and if they had all had the opportunity to read this language of the ordinance. I just think as this develops, it needs to be, have input like we're hearing tonight, to be sure that everybody really had a chance to see it. I think I understand that it's, you don't necessarily have to have a music venue, but that you, if you don't, then you are retail. I was concerned that there's not office. And then I also wanted to know what this, the items offered for sale must support the Cultural Heritage District by promoting the district or musicians, craftsmakers, or performance venues. I'm concerned about that language because it's so tight. We're controlling what people are selling. And so I need to hear from you all what you think about that, the way that's phrased, and what that means, and how restrictive that is. I mean, I think I understand the point of the philosophy of this, but I just want to be sure that we're not marching along too quickly before we know what the consequences are going to be of what we're doing. And then I thought of, the historic overlay that you mentioned, that's already in place, is about building structures and facades and physical aspects, right?
Correct.
And this, as a cultural overlay, is getting into these other nuances. So I wondered if, you mentioned there weren't any others in Tennessee. If Jonesboro, Tennessee, has something like this, they might be a model to consider. They've been successful in keeping the spirit of their town that is invaded by tourists for the Storytelling Festival and droves, and yet it is a special place. So that's a potential model to consider. I know that Telluride, Colorado, has fought off major standardization and been able to keep the integrity of what their character is. So that's another model we might consider looking at, to see how they, what we could learn from them as well. So I just, I guess I'm concerned about that real detail about what we're controlling, what people are selling. And so I want to hear what everybody thinks about that.
Commissioner, if I can clarify one issue, that there's a threshold question that has to be addressed first, and that is, do you have 11 similar stores that you're operating? So unless your real estate office has 11 stores that are operating the same, or if you're, you know, if you're Mike's Ice Cream and you've got 11 others that you're operating, that you have the same facade, that you have the same decor, that you have the same colors, same uniforms. Unless those things exist, then you can operate within this cultural heritage overlay. It's focused towards, as I mentioned, chain businesses that have standardized formulas as to how they present theirselves and the merchandise that they sell.
So Doug, could I ask you to clarify something? Under, I'm sorry, Andre, if that's okay.
Just to that, I guess, I guess then we need to, the language needs to be more clear. If that's, if that's the overlying set of criteria to start, then that, I mean, it may be in here, and I just missed it, but I guess it's, it sounds like it's discouraging businesses that are opening unless they support our cultural heritage and are something oh-so Nashville, and not just that they're an individual, unique boutique business. I just want to be sure that we're clear on that.
Okay, and, yes, and that's one of the...
We're not all boots and barbecue. We are other things, too, but we're still Nashville.
Correct. And that's one of the things that the council member was also concerned about and asked that we meet with other concerned parties and try to tighten down the language.
Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, I would love to comment on this, but I need to abstain due to my day job. Thank you.
Stuart?
Hunter, do you have a follow-up to this?
Thank you. Item number, I guess, B1 in the ordinance, as it's written, doesn't appear unless I'm, sorry, Section 3, B1. Thank you. Doesn't appear to apply to only those businesses who have 11 establishments or more. And number two does, specifically. But number one, I guess I'm asking, is number one would apply to all ground-floor uses? Is that correct?
I believe the way that it reads now, that that's correct. And again, that's going back to what the intent was for this ordinance and the need to come back and clarify that issue. Because the intent was that it be chain stores that are presenting themselves with a formula.
So that both item one and two would apply to only establishments that have more than 11 stores?
I believe that was the goal of the sponsor.
Thank you.
Stuart?
Thank you. That's, that's a pretty significant difference, and kind of underlines what I think is fairly obvious, and that is, we're not, we shouldn't be voting on this today. This, this needs a whole lot more thought. And actually, these are planning issues, and the idea that they might get worked out at some other area, that's fine, but we should be the ones working them out, too. We should be clear on whatever we vote for, that it is good planning. And I guess especially when it is, I mean, this is a breathtaking approach, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it, and I'd kind of like to have it on Hillsborough Village. A much, yeah, I mean, not that Hillsborough Village needs my help, it's doing quite well. But it's a pretty dramatic assault on the free enterprise system, actually. And I'm not an extremist on that. And I really supported all of the design controls on Second Avenue, and worked for them for a long time, and so did, so did many people here. But it wasn't long ago, it was one generation ago, that through the, through the planning wisdom of councils and commissions in the 50s and 40s in Nashville, we banned all residential living downtown, through most of downtown. It was only recently we allowed that. And I'm, I think this is an idea worth looking at and refining, and not necessarily against at all. I don't know how much of it was brought about by the potential horror of a drugstore being down there. Maybe that was all just journalism. But this seems like a rather dramatic thing to ask a planning body to be voting on with the kind of uncertainties that I see in the bill. And I'd really like to know more about what some of the current property owners think. I mean, it's, it's fine to grandfather, and I think that was a good, obviously, we wouldn't even be close to approving this if we didn't have a grandfathering thing. So that's good. But that's a limitation on your rights. We all know that things happen, and sometimes grandfathering is not the same as freedom to keep on with your, your use forever. I'm somewhat torn about it, but I am pretty convinced that I'm not prepared to vote for it tonight. Thank you.
Hunter?
I did want to take the opportunity, it's not often you get the mic with Tom Turner and Butch and representatives from the district who have worked so incredibly hard to create an amazing, authentic place down here. And so I think the spirit of this is right on. And I congratulate everybody and thank you all for that. You know, I think something else that we should be thinking about, as Tom mentioned, authenticity. And, you know, to me, authenticity includes diversity. And so I was just talking to somebody the other day, before I'd even read this, about the district. And I often talk, I often quote Yogi Berra, you know, it's, nobody goes there anymore, it's too crowded. But I think one of the reasons why a lot of locals don't necessarily go to the district, and it's okay, we have lots of great other places to go, but it is because it's becoming too much of the same, perhaps. And I miss the days that there was a plant shop down there, and there were the, you know, art galleries, and there were, you know, some antique shops and things that don't necessarily fit into the item number one here, so, or Section 3, B1. So I think we ought to think through this a little more. And I think the spirit of Section 3, B2, is right on and will achieve a lot. But I have some real concerns about the maybe unintended consequences of the first item. Thank you.
Lilly?
I definitely would agree with the previous Commissioners who spoke. I think this is an awesome idea. Obviously, downtown is the heartbeat of the city. A lot of great things are happening to us because of what's going on downtown. But I don't necessarily agree with the type of restrictions that are in the bill, especially as it's written now. And I'm not exactly sure what type of restrictions on use that I would agree with, but I'm definitely not in agreement with the restrictions as they are currently written in this bill.
I have a question. The areas shown in gray, are those the only ones that are affected by this?
Yes, and it's just the first floor of those buildings.
All right. And what happens if somebody decides they want to have their property added to this or taken off? Is there a possibility of that?
Well, you'd have to amend this piece of legislation.
I mean, would it come back here, or would the council have to do that?
This is zoning overlay, so it would require a zoning amendment.
Right.
Yeah, which would require a recommendation from the commission and then the council action.
Okay.
It's a zoning boundary is what you have here.
Yeah, the only reason I bring that up is there is a kind of a process that you could go through if you wanted to change some of the areas.
Walter?
Thank you. You know, I was just listening, one of the things that I agree with Hunter is the fact that they have put a lot of work in that downtown district to create a really, really showpiece. And I, too, remember that this was built by locals, basically Nashvilleans, because I remember not long ago, when it was mine with furniture stores and Marsh Furniture Company and a lot of red lights districts, as well as service merchandise. So they did a good job in turning it around. This same concept also is used in a lot of other cities that I've gone to. I think that I can appreciate the councilperson in that district realizing that there will be and is work to be done on this ordinance, because it is pretty, I guess, radical. It's huge, and that's why I think she was willing to have some hearings to, you know, to take a look at it on a closer, put down on a microscope, so to speak. So I'd hate to just throw this out altogether. I'd like to try to see how we can help them make it work by, you know, letting them have the meetings and bringing all the people in on this list of businesses to see if they can work it out and make it work to suit everybody. For that reason, I'd just see, make a motion to see if they can actually have a meeting, bring all the parties... have a meeting, bring all the parties together, and not make a decision on that until after they have the meetings and meet with everybody concerned. And that would be my motion.
Stuart, second.
Is that a motion to defer for one meeting or two?
One meeting.
Is that enough time?
Well-
Is that enough?
That's, that's, I just, this is more of a procedural issue that the commission needs to be aware of, and you may want to direct us. This bill actually passed the council on first reading on May 6th.
Right.
Which, at the end of 30 days, would be deemed approved by the commission. You may want to request that, well, I mean, a deferral is fine. I think what you were trying to get is, is feedback and to work with it. It's just, I need to make the commission aware of the 30 days.
Well, let me change my motion. What I'd like to do-
You have a meeting.
I'd like to do is go ahead and agree with the zoning, the commissioners' ruling, approve it, but at the same time, we need to figure out a way to let them meet, work it out, and to come up with a good product.
May I make a suggestion to the commission? If the commission, because it does go for second reading before it could return here, if, even if the commission gave a recommendation for disapproval and asked that after the public hearing, and the council lady has stated that she's going to work with the, the public, that it be re-referred back here if there are changes, then that would still get it to the commission, to the council. They'll be able to have their public hearing and hear from, we've only heard from three people tonight that spoke for disapproval of this, but it would allow for another public hearing, hopefully more input and direct meetings. And then if they did make changes to the legislation, then it would require that it come back here for reconsideration. And so if it's, if they make substantive changes to the ordinance, then it would have to come back here.
Well, just a question on that point, Doug. If, you mean as opposed to the proponents agreeing not to bring it up on public hearing next meeting? That would be the cleanest way to do it.
Yeah.
I thought I remembered, can, can the council, I guess they can on zoning, can the council amend on third reading?
Yes.
So say that again in short-
So there are a couple of different tracks that you could, the commission could take. You could do an approval, and then you could change that recommendation before third reading. Or you could do a disapproval. And even if with the disapproval, they could still have second reading, but then re-refer it back-
We can approve.
If you chose to at that time. If they change, if they alter the legislation after second reading, then it would have to come back here for a recommendation before it could go, before it could go through third reading.
It may, it may very well be that the commission doesn't feel comfortable about approving or disapproving. And that goes back to, I think, Councilman Hunt's original recommendation, which would be a motion to defer action on this, but request that any, picking up on the last part, request that the council re-refer any changes that they're making back to this commission before third reading.
I thought that might create a procedural problem for the proponents.
Yes.
Which I don't really want to do. I want to, I want to keep the lines of-
The issue is that the public hearing is already set and scheduled for June 3rd, and by council rule, that public hearing cannot occur without a planning commission recommendation.
Because it's not 30 days. Yeah, that's not 30 days.
Yeah, so-
So we could defer it, but you'd have people down there, and, and then you couldn't hold it.
That's right. So we would prefer to have an action tonight, approve or disapprove. Either way, have it referred back to this commission after second reading, which is, which is coming up.
All right. Well, I would move that we disapprove and, and ask that it be referred to us after public hearing.
Hunter, is your second to that?
You want me to withdraw that so we can discuss it further? Let me withdraw that and hear what-
Okay.
And, you know, I don't know that this addresses everyone's concerns, but I think if, could we, as a commission, make a motion to disapprove as is, but to approve with certain changes?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my question to the commission, perhaps to the applicants and to the staff, if Section 3, B1 and 2 applied only to chain, or, you know, those establishments with more than 11, 11 or more stores, you know, I think that begins to open the door for the plant shop and the antique shop and many on this list who wouldn't currently comply. And again, I haven't thought through all the details, obviously, but that would be one option we might have, is if we've got feedback from the, from the applicant and the staff on that change that we could, might be able to support. I don't know if the staff has any-
I have a, oh, go ahead, finish.
Well, if the staff has any thoughts or comments about that.
Well, that certainly would match the intent of what the sponsor wanted.
Okay. Could I ask, could I ask the sponsor or the applicant if, if that would meet the intent, and with, if you, yeah, would you all be supportive of applying the same, applying Section 3, B1, which addresses that the establishment shall include a performance venue, or if it's retail, 75% of the items offered for sale must support the Cultural Heritage District by promoting the district or musicians, craftsmen, makers, or performance venues. I still think you're eliminating, you know, it may be too, well, I don't know, whether, whether we applied the same, that standard to not all businesses, which is the way it's currently written, but only to those businesses who have 11 or more establishments.
We would be receptive to that, and basically, it would seem to me that it would either be a motion to approve with that change in it. Also, we refer here after the public hearing on June 3, or as Stuart was talking about, a disapproval to come back. But that was by far the biggest thing we heard about. So if it's a motion to approve with that amended to it, and a requirement that it be re-referred here after June 3 public hearing, we're perfectly fine with that.
And that would then, if it went through council with that change, they would only need 21 votes. If it went through council as written, they would need 27 votes.
Correct.
Okay.
Unless we change our-
Unless you change your recommendation before third reading.
Not a change.
Do you want to make a motion, Hunter?
I have a quick question. It's a slightly different topic, but I just want to be sure it's understood somewhere, and because it's zoning, the enforcement of this would come through at permitting time, when somebody came, they would be determining whether they support the cultural heritage of the district or not, and what they're selling or what they're doing, and that's by the zoning department? Or where does that enforcement come?
It would come through zoning. So you would, if you were going to occupy space on Broadway, let's say, you would go down to codes to get your use and occupancy permit, and whatever construction that you might be doing, you'd also get a permit for that, and that at that time is when this review process would happen.
I think I'm more comfortable with Stuart's proposal, just because there could be other variables that we hadn't thought of. It may not be just that language. I think that language is clearly the one that's getting us all the most, but there might be something we hadn't really thought of that could come up through further discussions. So without any ill intent for the bill, I think saying that it's a disapproval with a re-referral might be what I'd be more comfortable with, but I'm interested to hear what everybody else says.
Stuart?
Yeah, I think we have, I think Hunter's highlighted the biggest concern we have, but I'm not entirely sure what I think about 50% here and 75% there. I mean, there's some other things. I probably would prefer a disapproval coming, with it coming back, but it's, well, yeah, I guess so. Would you like a motion from one of us?
Motion.
I'm moving that we disapprove with the understanding that it be re-refered after public hearing for further discussion here.
And that's based as, basically, disapproval as it's currently written.
Right, definitely, with the understanding that we're not, we're not foreclosing modification.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, a second, other discussion.
Can I just ask for clarity? It would be re-refered to us if it changes?
Yes, if it doesn't change-
Second reading.
If it doesn't change at all, then there's no need to refer. We've already disapproved.
Okay, we've got a motion, second, all in favor.
All in.
One abstaining. Raise your hand, please, all in favor. Any opposed? One opposed, one abstaining. So the motion carries. We're ready for item number eight, and then for the members of the audience, after we do number eight, the commissioners will take a short 10-minute break. We're going to hear number eight, and then we're going to take a 10-minute break. If you're filing out of the auditorium, if you take your conversations out so we can continue with the commission meeting. Go ahead, item number eight.
Item eight is a request to amend the mansions at Fontanelle, specific plan located in the White Creek area. The request is specifically to amend the SP to add approximately 1.97 acres to the, to, within the SP, and to increase the total number of resort rooms from 140 to 150 rooms, and to amend various limitations for the seasonal performance entertainment venue. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. The current zoning is specific plan. The area to be added into the property is zoned, single-family RS20. The policy is natural conservation and rural. Natural conservation is intended to protect sensitive sites such as steep hillsides, floodplain, floodways. Rural policy is intended for rural areas to maintain a rural character. There is also a special policy in the natural conservation area that was adopted by the planning commission in last year, when there was, when Fontanelle came in with an amendment at that time. The intent of, of the policy is to permit basically the unique commercial operation that is, that is occurring on this property while preserving majority of, of the, of the land. This is the site plan. The first change is the area, I don't know if you can see that on the screen very well, but it's highlighted in yellow. That is the approximately 2 acres that is being added into the site. The reason for that addition is that if you see the red line, that is where the current drive that runs back to the mansion is located. It's located between the, the current stage and where the concessions are located. So it's, there's a conflict between pedestrians and vehicles when there's an event and someone trying to get back to the mansion. So they are asking that the property be added and relocating that drive to the area that is the blue dash line. So that would reroute traffic away from the event and remove that conflict between pedestrians and automobiles. The second item is the area outlined in, in red, and this is what you looked at last year from amendment, where they created a rural resort. They have reprogrammed the site. So before, up at, is up at the top, it was 10 buildings and 140 units. So they were able to reprogram the interior of the buildings and basically reduce the number of buildings, reducing the number of footprints, but actually adding 10 more units. So they're decreasing the footprint of, of the overall area that's being impacted at this site. The major change is the changes to the seasonal performance entertainment venue. This is the definition, and I know this is a lot of words, I've got another slide after this, but this shows you the words in blue and underline are, are language that's been added, and then the struck out is language that's been taken out. So going on to this slide, so this shows you on the left is the current requirements, and then on the right is proposed requirements. So the season, there is no change. Still happened from April 1st to November 30th, so there's no change with that. The days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday is currently permitted. The proposed would permit it any day of the week. Yearly max number of events, currently you can have 18. That includes 14 seasonal events plus four, up to four symphony events. They're proposing no change to that. You would still, they would only still be required or permitted 18 total events. The monthly max number of events, currently it's two. The symphony can also hold up to four in any one month, so you could have a maximum of six. The change would permit up to 14, and also, so they could do all 14 in one month if they wanted to, and the symphony could still hold up to four, four additional. The max number of weekly events, currently there's none permitted. So the proposed change would permit one per month, April, May, September, October, November, and up to the max, which would be 14, in June, July, and August. The max number of weekend events per month, currently there's no more than two, including the symphony. And then the proposed change would permit up to the max, which would be 14. The cutoff times, currently it's 10:30 PM. Sunday through Thursday, it would go to 10:30 PM, and then they're asking for a 30-minute increase on Friday and Saturday to 11. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. This still maintains the rural characters, is not changing the, the development along the front of the property. It's removing some of the conflicts, conflicts between pedestrian automobiles with the event, and it has reduced the impact of, of the area that's being disturbed. The site still maintains a majority of its, I think it's approximately 75% of the site remains undisturbed, so it still meets the natural conservation policy, as well as we find that it meets the special policy that, that the commission adopted last year.
Thank you. Item is open for public hearing. Applicable to be allowed 10 minutes, you can hold two back for rebuttal.
Thank you, commissioners. John Haas with Edge Planning Landscape Architecture and Urban Design. I've been involved with Fontanelle as a land planner and a development consultant since the beginning with this project. It was, dates back to July of 2009. Over the last five years, as Fontanelle has continued to evolve, and the owners have examined their operations, and essentially the community has lived with the property as it's developed. They continue to look for ways to tweak those, some of those restrictions that went into place with the initial SP. As you can imagine, with the initial SP, there was a lot of fear in the community with these uses. At the time, it was the Barbara Mandrell Mansion. That initial SP added a number of uses, albeit with the protection from green space and tree preservation and so on. But there were a lot of questions then. So in working with the community, we came up with a number of restrictions that are part of that SP. During the last five years, we've been back before you with some revisions, some to the amphitheater, some adding the uses such as the rural resort and the southern living house, all in an effort to improve those operations and improve the experience of Fontanelle. Over those last five years, we've had eight neighborhood meetings, and in addition to those, we've had four council public hearings and five planning commission public hearings. So we really feel like we've been able to gather input throughout. We've had attendance at that, those meetings, I'd say anywhere from the initial meetings had, may have had 100 people in the room, to the recent meeting on April 28th, about a month ago, we had somewhere between 10 and 15. During all of those meetings, we've worked with staff and Councilman Hunt to expand our notification beyond the minimum standard. So we've always made an effort to get as many people as we could to the meetings and get the input that we were searching for. I say this to demonstrate that the owners of Fontanelle have consistently sought that neighborhood input. And the idea that with those initial restrictions, while respecting those, that as we've sort of taken baby steps to make adjustments to the venue particularly, that we've done that with an openness to hearing concerns from the neighbors. So we feel like we've been respectful in that way. As Jason mentioned, there's three revisions as part of this. I think the first two are major improvements. They actually increased our amount of open space on site, as well as increased our percentage of tree save. The reduction, as we've gone through value designing the units and the buildings for the hospitality rooms, we've been able to reduce three buildings at the same time, increasing the rooms, but getting more efficient with the use of those footprints and increasing the green space again. There has been- There has been some confusion, as you can imagine, with the language that Jason just went over, and I think that slide was a great slide to see a side-by-side comparison. But I do just want to reiterate that we're not asking for more shows. Yes, it is feasible with these changes that you could have 14 shows in a month. That's not our intent. You know, obviously, what we're looking for here is a little more flexibility that could be accepted by by the neighborhood. The last thing I want to mention is there's also been some confusion about some other events that have happened on the property, and you may hear about those tonight. They have various community-related events, charity-type fundraisers, fun runs through the property, car shows, craft fairs, and there's been concern about whether those are counting towards the 14 events. I do want to just remind everyone that that use is an approved use with the SP, community-related events, and as long as those events are not ticketed through the owners of Fontenelle, they don't count towards that 14. None of those events take place at the amphitheater, which was another caveat that was part of that original SP. Lastly, I just want to say that again, we're looking for flexibility with the amphitheater. We've tried to work very closely with the neighborhood. Part of the changes that you see tonight where we had asked for the weekday events, one of the concessions we already made was to back that off on that window outside of the school year. So in the summer, we're looking for that freedom throughout the summer. During, you know, school session, we backed that up to one per month on a weekday, again, just to give us that flexibility. And with that, I'll reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal, and we respectfully request your favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
My name is Janie Layton. I apologize for these. I didn't come here prepared to read a statement, but y'all let me sit too long, so here we go. Okay. I'm for I support this proposal fully. One of the things that he pretty much stole my thunder. Sorry. One of the things that Fontenelle has done is to give back to the community. We had the community meeting, as he explained, and in this meeting, all the owners were present, all the decision-makers were present, everybody was there who could make address concerns that the people who are opposing the submission this zoning thing have. Now, no one showed up, and even one of the major opponents of this zoning hearing was there. No one said a word. So it would be just common courtesy for these people who are opposed to show up and give these owners a chance to address their concerns, just as a courtesy to them. Now, some of the things that Fontenelle has done in terms of giving back and in terms of improving the community is to remove the, it was a junk site on the corner of Whites Creek Pike and Old Hickory Boulevard, and the guy that ran it was running a junkyard, he had shorts up to here, I kid you not, and he had a gun strapped to his hip. So the owners bought that and ousted him, thank God. It was a mess. So that they did that. They also, on the corner of Richard Richard, Richard's is allowed to park there. They've got a community market, the the community has a market, has a garden, and they've got a they've allowed them to use that for the community market. They've gotten in, I rent Babies at the NICU Centennial, and anytime I go to them, they give me anything I need in terms of tickets or food or anything for to support the fundraisers for the Babies of the NICU. And we'd never have had the greenway had it not been for Fontenelle. They do fundraisers. These fundraisers are talking about support animals. They support the animals, the adopted animals. Oh, damn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? If you want to speak in support, please line up behind each other at the microphone.
Hi, I'm Larry Layton. I have to live with her. But I have the opportunity to live with her. I'm at 6951 Old Hickory Boulevard. I support, I can't see how anybody can can argue against the first two portions of this, the safety of the road and the and the reduction of footprint of the buildings. The third item being the concerts, I'm I'm all for all the concerts they can get in down there. It's it's, again, part of Music City, and and it's impossible to to think that you're going to get all the good entertainers to be free on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. Okay? I'm I'm willing to go out until 10:30 at night to hear one of these concerts in the middle of the week, and I want the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bill Reynolds. I own a cowboy town, which is about a mile directly behind the amphitheater of Fontenelle with I have my wife Denise, three school-aged children, and about 45 furry friends, most of which are over 1,500 pounds. We have a 14 years ago, I moved into Whites Creek looking for green scenic views. I've enjoyed a beautiful historic musical blend of entertainment, homes, farms, businesses. It's very unique there. We know, Whites Creek people know that development's coming that way. There's a lot of green space out there, and so developers are coming. We're just hoping that that we can have it done in a nice fashion to kind of turn Whites Creek into that Leapers Fork kind of a area, only 10 minutes from downtown Nashville. We prefer to see tourists and Nashville locals visit for a little while, leave their money and then go on home, you know, rather than having, you know, the alternative, which of course would be cluster homes of high-density, low-budget homes, which we you'll see us in here a lot trying to fight that. So we want those tourists to come and enjoy good music. We're we are Music City. We've talked about that already. So good music, good food, and of course, of course, ice cold Coca-Cola with that. We feel this this beats that alternative of, and so we love Fontenelle and what it has done to the community. I know that there's going to be people that complain about noise and cars, et cetera, but I'd rather have these cars come in there 18 times a year than have another 100, 200, 300, 400 little homes in there with those cars in there 365 days a year. So I support Fontenelle and what they're doing. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jim Wood, and I'd like to thank y'all for giving me this opportunity to speak. I want to speak to the responsiveness of the Fontenelle management to the community. The very first meeting I ever went to was a meeting where people were talking about the problems that they had with Fontenelle. The most common problem that I heard was after a concert, there's trash in front of my house on the streets around Fontenelle. To that, the owner of Fontenelle didn't say, well, we'll look into it or anything. He said, we will clean it up, and they do. And I think that speaks highly of their sense of civic pride. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey there, I am Paula Jones, and my husband and I bought the historical James Gang Building right on Whites Creek. And we're going to build a boutique, especially gift store in there, and we picked this location because we like the area. We think the owners of Fontenelle have really brought a great thing there, and it's not where you have to go into the high traffic of downtown, and people can come out and enjoy the view, the amphitheater. We love, we have seats there and love to go. We look forward to the concert season, and we tell everyone we know about the area. I like I like going to the concerts and the cafe. We're down there a lot, and we tell everybody we know it's a great community and the owners are great people to work with.
Thank you all for letting us have a moment to speak. My name is Zan Martin. I live at 3504 Knight Road in Whites Creek and have resided in the community for 25 years. During that time period, we have had a number of very, very intrusive programs that were trying to be brought to to our community. One was a trailer park. One was a big trucking company just right in my own backyard, and a number of very, very high-density, low-budget homes. Because I am a PR professional, a lot of the community members asked me to be the spokesperson for the community, and and I willingly did that. When Fontenelle came in, we we all got together at the mansion as a community to look at what they were doing, and there were concerns that we had, and it was a it was a good give and take. During that time period, I've had a chance to meet a lot of the people who have some issues with Fontenelle, and in the last two years have actually been brought in to help handle their public relations. And so I have facilitated numerous meetings with the owners of Fontenelle to bring those community members together to talk about those issues. And I'm going to stand at the back of the room as we depart from here with my business cards in my hand for any community members who would like for me to personally get involved like I have for the community for the last 25 years and do everything I can to facilitate, making sure that we can come together as a community and a wonderful Fontenelle program. I'm in support of all of these issues.
Thank you.
My name is Pam Wood. I've lived in Whites Creek for almost 70 years. I've seen it develop from being very rural to what it is today. I have a 35-acre farm, and I plant a large garden, and I love it. But I also love what's happening, the new life that's come to Whites Creek because of places like Richard's Cafe and Fontenelle, where we can come out of the garden and dress up and go listen to good music, eat good food, and it's brought they've brought life to Whites Creek. And it's and I really support all everything they've done. I've been there for it all, has been done on a very first-class level, and I expect all this to be the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Vance Nichols. I live at 3882 Knight Drive. If you look on that map, my property is right in the corner of where Fontenelle's ends. I've attended a lot of concerts at Fontenelle over the past couple of years, and there's been a lot that I haven't attended. I work in my garden a lot after work, up until pretty good in the evening, 8, 9. I never hear any issues with noise. I never have any issues with traffic on my road, anything like that. Definitely supportive of this amendment, and thank you, Councilman Hunt, for all your hard work. Mr. Ponder, good to see you again.
I'm going to make this short and sweet. My name's Stephen Whitson. I live at 4625 Whites Creek Pike, and I've been employed by the mansion at Fontenelle for four years, and I'm in favor of all that's been stated.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm in support of this amendment. I love your mission statement. As the city or the county begins to evolve, the property is evolving. I live in Greenbrier. I'm the facility director for the property. We are very-
Please state your name and address.
My name is Larry Theis, 404 Green Meadow Court in Greenbrier. We do a lot for the environment. We're trying to better support it. We're planting trees all the day. But the one part I love in here is free and open civic life, which is part of your statement. We have free trails. We have free parking. We have free greenways. We have a place where people can come and bring their dogs and their children to play out there. We're trying to advance it. It's one of the few areas where everything is charging. The owner has been great to open up and have a free place for people just to come out and jack and relax. I had one lady today to come out. She was from out of town. She just went down by the creek and just wanted to enjoy the environment. During the CMFS, we get people all the time from all around the world, and they say, I get tired of looking at concrete. I just want to see some trees, and that supports downtown as well, and that's I'm in support of it.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Trest. I own Richard's Cafe in Whites Creek on the corner of Old Hickory Boulevard and Whites Creek Pike. And I'm not associated with Mark and Dale financially or business-wise, but I would be in a minute because they're very decent people. I just listed a few of the things that I've noticed in our neighborhoods since they came to be. First, they created a beautiful road frontage down there in front of their house, lots of green space, walking trails that they don't charge anybody for. There's better police protection in the neighborhood because of what they've done down there. They put Whites Creek on the map. You hear it on the morning commute news now where you never did before. Charitable events like Wolfstock and many others that they put on for the community. Space and support for local artists like whittlers and Indian artists and stuff like that. There's better roads out where we are now because of them. And just recently, starting Wednesdays this summer, the lot across from me, which is owned by Mark, is now a farmer's market for organic farmers and that for the community. So I'm very much in favor of what they're trying to do to improve their business model.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Oswald, co-owner of Fontenelle. Thank you for your time. I live at 4325 Estes Road in Nashville. I just wanted to point out that while we've been allowed through our SP to do 14 concerts and four symphonies, a total of 18 events, our first season, we did 11 total. Our second season, we did eight total. And this last year, we did 11 total again. As it's evolved, we've found that it's really tough to book enough shows on Fridays and Saturdays because a lot of the acts that we'd like to get are in Chicago, Detroit, Atlanta, big, big, big markets on those nights. And so consequently, in the last year alone, we missed James Taylor on a Thursday. We missed Bob Dylan last year before last because it was a Wednesday. We missed a replay with Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. So the net impact of what we're asking for in the course of 14 shows is really that maybe two or three more happen that couldn't. It's impossible for them to happen in a row. It just doesn't work like that. We like Fridays and Saturdays as much as our community does because you sell a lot more tickets on Fridays and Saturdays. But there are certain acts on certain nights that would really help us round out our offerings. So it's not a deviation from our plan. It's an adjustment to our plan, and we will continue to refine, adjust, listen, and grow. We feel like we're just starting to get there, and this body and the community and the city council and our neighbors have really been there for us. And frankly, when you hear a dissenting comment, it breaks my heart because we wake up every day trying to make everybody happy, which it's a little bit impossible, but that's our goal. And when Zan Martin made her comment, she is there 24/7 as well as our general manager to talk to anybody anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Helen Tarleton. I live at 7135 Old Hickory Boulevard, about a mile and a half from Fontenelle, and I love hearing about these invitations that have occurred to meet with them. I've never gotten one, so I'd be really happy to get one. That would be awesome. Last Friday night, there was a concert at Fontenelle, and on my way home, I saw the cars collecting on the grounds and geared up for my typical course of action, which is to find somewhere to go rather than being at home where often the bass and drums can be heard throughout the house. Friday, I was happily surprised by the fact that we could hear nothing inside our house, and outside, it sounded like there was a concert going on in the neighborhood but not on top of the neighborhood. As a result of past concerts, I was concerned about this this proposed amendment because we have school-aged children who need to sleep and study during the week, and we can't leave the house during the week if the sound is too loud. So Friday's concert gave me a window into what it could be like if the owners of Fontenelle really were seriously interested in collaborating with the community. Contrary to this, a few years ago, when Fontenelle requested another amendment, I was in the parking lot after the meeting when a man associated with Fontenelle came up to me and said, I'm not interested in the people who are already in favor of what you're we're doing. I'm interested in people like you, and I'm going to make it my business to show that we mean to be good neighbors. I said, I'll take your word for it, to which he replied, don't take me at my word, judging by my actions. In the intervening time, we've received no communication from anyone at Fontenelle, and our civil attempts to address the noise level have been fruitless. However, interestingly, I did receive an email from someone today, this afternoon. I would welcome the opportunity to be in ongoing timely communication to take these issues seriously with ordinances in place for accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? If you're going to speak, please line up behind each other's microphone.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Steve H-
My name's Steve Huff. I'm president of the Cherry Grove Homeowners Association. We're about a few hundred yards south of Fontenelle. And I'd like to start by saying we appreciate all the things that they've done to try to make things work in the area. They certainly made those efforts and have done a good job for the most part. And this particular amendment, while we see a lot of good in it, I think there's something in it that you all need to be careful to look at and be aware of and pay attention to, and in fact, probably modify and amend. And that is the ability now at Fontenelle to hold these concerts in the school year in the middle of the week. Our previous speaker talked about children wanting to, need to study, need to get in, get out, get in and out of their house in the middle of the week. If we have these concerts in April, in May, in September, October, and I believe those were up on the screen as possibilities, that certainly influences the ability of these kids to study. I have a concern with that. I hope you do, too. Our mayor and the city has put a big focus on education. This certainly goes head-to-head with that and creates a problem in that regard. So my suggestion would be, and from the, I think from the homeowners in our association, would be that we make some sort of modification to this amendment so that during the school year, that weekdays are not a part of this in terms of an option. It just does too much damage to our kids. We don't want that happening. And so I would suggest and hope that this commission would make those changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Mr. Swagard if he could put on the screen the changes to the times and days of the venue? Thank you.
How are you?
Hi. My name is Alisa Batson, and I live at 4712 Lipton Pike in White's Creek, about a mile and a half from Fontenelle, as the crow flies. A lot of the comments that have been made in favor of this amendment are not really related to the amendment. They are making positive comments about Fontenelle in general. And I just want to emphasize that it's not Fontenelle that is on trial here. It is these particular amendments in request and some failed promises in the past. It was very difficult to get information on this, these amendments. I still haven't received them from the planning department after five requests. The 1,000-foot rule for notification, I don't think is fair when it pertains to noise levels because the noise travels so much further than 1,000 feet. And I think there should be a special rule about that. If there's something about noise, it needs to, people need to be notified as far as the noise travels. Only 10 to 15 people were at the community meeting a week or so ago because people didn't know. We weren't notified. I found out after the fact. Fontenelle has not been dutiful in notifying the community. The noise affects certain families, and it depends on if there's a hill in front of you in the concert venue. So some families are notified very drastically and have to leave their homes. Others, for example, on Knight Road, don't hear it at all because there's a huge mountain in between. So please take that in mind. At what point is the volume or amount of noise not consistent with rural character? I think that's a consideration. 14 concerts in one month? Why make it even possible, whether the intent is there or not? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Eric Tarleton. I live at 7135 Old Hickory Boulevard in White's Creek. I'm a sound engineer, worked in the music industry here in Nashville for over 30 years. My primary occupation is live production, is production of live concert performances. And I don't believe that kiddie bungee jumping comes under the title of unique businesses. I'm asking the current request for additional performances and time extensions at Fontenelle be denied pending a review of accountability for sound levels coming from anywhere on the premises. Our house sits approximately 4,000 feet northeast of the stage. And when I can walk out on my front porch and measure decibel levels, 87 decibels on my front porch using a weighted scale on a sound pressure level meter, I question the decibel level at the concert venue. The stage faces easterly, and current regulations specify 96 dB at the front of house console. Stage monitoring faces westerly into the valley. And from my experience, stage monitoring can far exceed sound levels at the front of house. Metro Police have no way to determine sound levels. No officer on the Metro Police force is equipped with a sound pressure level meter. Some sort of objective accountability to the neighborhood should be easily accessed by, for every performance. By way of example, I sent each one of you an email of a copy of the ordinance used by Chastain Park Amphitheater in Atlanta, Georgia, which contains a detailed summary of regulations agreed upon by the neighbors, the city, and the concert venue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Jim Schratten. I live at 6956 Old Hickory Boulevard. I could just as easily stand in the other line. Very proud of Fontenelle for what they're doing. They're actually clients in the line of work that I'm in. I would give them, with that being said, a C or a D on communication, local communication skills. I would ask for them to continue using good judgment with the number of events that they have locked in together. And then I would also like to say that my, I have a question that I'd like to ask. When it comes to the definition of non-concert events not ticketed by Fontenelle, if there would be a cap on those numbers of events? The next thing I'd like to say is it's hard to explain how loud it is out there. This doesn't really bother me, but it really, the way the hills go, I can hear the, I can hear the lyrics to Roundabout if Yes is playing there. And I already know them, so it is something to take into consideration about all of this sound. The next thing, I don't know if you can have Fontenelle work with us for the weekday concerts? It seems like a reasonable request. And with that being said, when I was going home on Saturday evening, I don't mind the traffic. I don't mind waiting a few minutes, you know, to get on the other side of Fontenelle, and that's where your strongest detractors live. But I did notice the traffic was also being backed up on the exit from Bryley Parkway. And this is, this is something that's important. You had FedEx trucks backing up and UPS trucks backing up onto the parkway when they're trying to get off because of traffic coming out. I'm sure Fontenelle would be happy to address those issues there. With that being said, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seagan, you've got two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. I do want to apologize if there's some folks here who were not notified. Again, I just want to reiterate that every public neighborhood meeting that we've had, we've worked with the councilmen and we've worked with planning staff to go beyond the minimum requirements. We've always extended that. I guess you can never go far enough, but we've always done more. I think in fact, if you stick to that 1,000 feet, there might only be about 50 residents. And we've always been in that 100 to 200 letters going out. More importantly, what I do want to say is that the venue does, per the SP regulations, we do have a monitor at the soundboard. And we are constantly watching that decibel level per the SP. And we do not exceed it. We've been in conformance. In addition to that, because we have heard concerns from the neighbors, the client has also hired his own sound team to go around and monitor at various stations in the neighborhood. And he's found those levels to be in conformance with the, with the SP as well. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Declare the public hearing closed.
Can I speak?
Well, I'd ask everybody to speak before he did his rebuttal, so-
He just said, I just want to make a comment. My name is Kelvin Winter. I live at 3948 Lord Road, two blocks from Fontenelle. Obviously, I don't have a problem with Fontenelle. But when he says that they sent out notices about meetings, we don't get any notices on Lord Road about meetings.
Okay.
The notice I got was just a mailbox.
Okay. We'll take that in consideration. Thank you.
I just wanted to make that clear to us. We don't get any, I'm two blocks away.
Andre.
I think there's a lot of, it was great to hear a lot of the positive effect that Fontenelle has brought. I think there's pretty good continuity in that, in the, in the whole community. Looking at all the letters that we received, and I wonder if the concern does boil down to the levels of the sound. And in one of the, in the letter that we received about the Atlanta venue for Chastain Amphitheater, they said that they did a decibel level study and found that really it was only the low frequencies that were the problem in their case, and that the mid and higher frequencies didn't create such a bad effect. And I heard tonight, somebody say that they had to leave their house because of the bass and drums reverberating through the house. So I wonder if that idea of, that they did in Atlanta to test the nuances of the decibels of different levels with the community participating, which they did in Atlanta, along with the venue, as, and they agreed upon a neutral body to take the measurements, and they came together. It had to be a conciliatory place to find which levels were going to be acceptable. And I just wonder if that conversation were to take place, if that would minimize some of the rancor on the nuance of the numbers and the times that it's held and some of these considerations that we're having tonight. Maybe if you didn't have bass drums reverberating through your house when it happened, 20 venues or 18 might be okay, or during a week might be okay in the, in the school year. I don't know, but I'm just, I'm trying to unthread where the difficulties lie. And that could be a component that might help ease some of the questions of, of when these things happen. And so I guess I would have, I'd be interested to hear if they could, depending on what, I don't know how we're going to address this as a matrix as a whole, or if we're going to take it apart piece by piece. But I think in the background of our decision, we should think about that as a way to follow up, to help ease this, I hope. I want to hear what everybody else says, but that was one of my main thoughts, having, you know, given everything we read recently.
Greg. Stuart. We're just glad you stayed to listen to this. That's great. All right. I'm a huge fan of Fontenelle and don't get out there as much as I'd like, would like to be out there more. But yeah, I think it is true that this, that some of the negative comments are not, not against Fontenelle, but against the specifics. And I don't really think people are as far apart as it sometimes sounds. And I hope, I hope that there can be some good meetings about some of this. We have heard a lot from Fontenelle over the last few years. They're one of the regulars here, always for changes and usually with a fair amount of community support. It is hard for people who haven't had to deal with constituent calls to understand about sound. But if you've been on the council for a few years, half a quarter mile from a concert venue, you hear a lot because it is so irregular and has to do with hills and valleys. And some people had no idea there was a concert, and other people drove their children to the emergency room, thinking their ear drones were, but, and it is, it is not a funny thing. I mean, it's, it's funny trying to make sense of it on the other end of the phone without everybody hating it, but that's funny to do. But it's, it's tough. So I, I, I'm not sure that the fact that Fontenelle would like to have more bands come in during the week outweighs that to me. If this were a referendum on whether Fontenelle was a good part of Nashville, there would be no opposition here from this group, I think. We, I think Fontenelle has a good reputation and we have great fun. I'm not sure that moving toward weekday concerts in light of past experience is a good thing. I'm not absolutely sure why we couldn't fix this 14 in a month, since nobody seems to want to do that. We clearly could do that. But I am, I am not in favor right now of weekday events at Fontenelle in the, particularly in the school, school year. I don't know if there's a compromise motion we can make in terms of a condition or not, but those are my concerns, and I'll, I'll just think about it as we hear from everyone else.
I have a question for the applicant.
Bring him on.
Yeah. We see on the screen that if this was allowed, you could have up to 18 concerts during the week, during the summer months. And I know it was stated before that that's not the intent to actually host all of them during the week, during any one month. And I wonder if there is a, maybe there's not a realistic number, but is there a realistic number that wouldn't, would not be necessarily this high, but still allow you the flexibility to hold multiple events, I guess, during the summer months, during the week?
There probably is. I think as we went out, you know, talked to the community, everyone has an opinion where their, that line is drawn. Also, I think that, you know, I'm proud to say that our client has, has self-policed themselves up to this point without any issues. And part of the issue is when you start saying this many in this month and this many in that, then it, then it becomes difficult to fit into that. But I'd say definitely there, we're open to that discussion about something less. Certainly not, you know, it doesn't have to be 14. Like, again, that's not the intent. The intent was to get that flexibility during the week. There is a, you know, what, what we might be able to do is say we could only have so many shows in a row, if that makes folks feel more comfortable, because it seems like there's a concern that there could be 14 or 18 shows in a row. And I don't think that's, that's not our intent. But there could be a number in there. I mean, I think we'd love to hear a proposal.
Is there currently any restriction on consecutive performances?
It's, there's something in there. Let's see. Go back. Basically, that you couldn't have more than, one that lasts more than one day. So that's- What the concern was at the time when that was initially written is that you could have a festival where one ticket buys you three days. And does that count as one event, or does it count as three events? So we wrote that in to say, if you were to do that, it would count as three events.
Okay. I think it's just a very big jump from non-permitted during the week to having 14-plus the symphony permitted during the week, especially, I mean, even if you don't have children in school during the summer, I mean, you have to, people who have jobs have to go to work the next day. That's just a lot to have to, to prepare yourself for if you live, unfortunately, one of the areas that you do get affected by the noise.
Mark, do you have a, do you have a suggestion?
From a practical point of view, I can't imagine us ever doing more than three or four weeknight shows in any given year or so. And particularly, they would happen during summer vacation. So if it was, if the scope was narrow, I mean, to say that there could not be more than four weeknights in any given season, or three weeknights, we'd live with it, because it doesn't happen that often. But when it does, it's important.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think that leads into my question. Can we amend this to limit it to three?
Yeah, this is a zoning amendment. You can put whatever conditions you want on it.
Okay. Well, certainly when it comes up for a motion, I would be in favor of that. And certainly, I understand, appreciate the neighbors being here and the situation about noise. I live across from the Music City Star Depot, so I know every morning at 6:14 what time it is. So, thank you.
Roger.
Yes, you know, after listening to both sides, as Chris said, both sides of the aisle, I was just making some comments. And it appears to me that we may ought to just look at all of the- of the issues that was brought forth, like, see if it can be approved with conditions like I think the staff recommended. But those conditions needs to be actually local monitoring, get a sound, I mean, they do some extreme hardcore monitoring, meeting with the neighbors. This is what I heard, meeting with the neighbors on request to talk about issues, something they have a concern about, and review the commission's thousand-foot, I guess, distance requirement that you got now. But there got to be a cutoff on it, because you can't run that thing out to Ashland City, Clogsfield, Madison. There's got to be a cutoff on it somewhere. So, all of those things, I think, they were valid points that were brought up, but they don't seem to be something that can't be dealt with if we put all this in place. And I believe the staff had a recommendation of approving with conditions, and make all of those conditions, and deal with those issues, come up with all of those issues that, that's already been listed. And after maybe six months to a year, look and see how this coming, how this shaking out, and then make an adjustment at that point in time. But I think that, that they are very valid points that I heard being presented, and I think that they could be, now that they are out and that we can work with them and get the staff and get, not the staff, but yeah, the staff at Fontenelle and, and the people at, in the, in the neighborhoods, to start really making some serious effort on working on these issues to see if we can get them solved. So, my recommendation, I guess, I would make a motion to prove it under conditions to address each and every one of those items that was brought up tonight, so that we can get, see if we can make it work.
Stuart, a second.
I may have a second to that, but I, I had, I would feel better about it. And I, I think, I think we're all kind of on the same page here. We, we want to approve something, but we want to modify it a little bit more than the current conditions. What is the status of this bill in terms of council action? Yeah, our staff.
It goes to public hearing at council on June 3rd.
A little bit like that last thing. Well, I can't really approve it, I don't think I can vote to approve it unless I knew a little bit more of specific changes. And I think those changes sound like they can be made, from, from what I've heard. So, I, I don't want to hold it up and hold up the public hearing. I don't know what you all think about it, but I'd feel better before, I'd feel better having it come back to us to make sure it sounds good. To, to make sure it's what we want in terms of the added conditions, but not to try to hold up the progress of it.
Philip.
I would hate to hold up, frankly, and therefore I move that we amend your motion to change the weekday events to only three in the months of June, July, and August.
Each month?
One.
One per month.
Well, they could regulate, but three during the summer months, I'll put it that way. So you might have two in June that way and one in August, but, you know, it would only be three weekday nights.
I was thinking something along those lines. I would have said maybe five in the summer season, so that we could have a real test. And then, if it could be monitored, like I was talking about, maybe with some further conversation among the whole, all the parties, if they choose to do a sound test, that'd be interesting if they want to, if they can. But at least to have it, if it were to then have an opportunity to evolve, again, could it come to, could it be a minor adjustment at a staff level? If ever, at the end of the summer, if everybody were happy with it, then they might be granted another small number for the next season, but not have to come back through this whole huge process, but maybe do it at a staff level. I mean, so let the summer sort of be the test, and if the decibels are adjusted, maybe people could be happier with it, and if they're not, they're not, and it doesn't, they don't get to do it again in the, in the school year. But if everybody were happy, they wouldn't have to come back through a huge hearing, but they could amend it at staff to adjust it further, or not, depending on how they handle it, how it works. Is that something we can?
Well, certainly that can be developed. If I, if I understand it, and then there's just some, let me try to, try to state what I've heard you say. Basically, there would be allowed three concerts during the summer months, whatever that is, with the condition that there is some type of a noise process to evaluate that.
That the neighbors are comfortable in.
I understand, but there's a lot of holes here. But the basic framework is that there is some type of a noise, and that could be the Atlanta approach, or it could be something else, and I understand that. And then, with the assumption that if they comply with that, they would be allowed five concerts each year or some number in the future during that same time period with the, the noise monitoring. So, I mean, that's what I heard you say, or at least.
Well, I said, or even during the school year, if the neighbors were so comfortable. I mean, I'd let them be, let them determine that, but not have to go through this enormous process. We did have one question about the non-ticketed events, and is that, that came out of the audience. Does that something that is not for us to consider tonight, because it's not in this proposal?
Yes.
I'm sorry, there's a procedural issue here. There's a motion on the floor. There's been no second, and we're all ready to discussion. So, either the motion is going to die for lack of a second, or somebody's going to second it.
Can I both second and amend it at the same time?
You, you can second it and then amend it.
All right, I second, and then I will again reoffer my amendment, based on the owner's comment that there would only be three or four of these a year anyway. So, that's why I came up with the three.
Stuart.
Well, let me clarify the motion. Let me just clarify the motion. The motion is to approve staff recommendation with a limit of maximum of three during the, I'm not sure what you want, the non-school?
June, July, and August.
Okay. Well, non-school year and June, July, and August are different things, because school tends to start in the first of August. But that's what, you just need to clarify what you want. It's, it can be any... I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm not arguing one way or the other. I just think you need to set a time.
But the other thing, though, was the maximum monthly amount of 14. Is everybody comfortable with that, or not?
Mr. Chairman.
Metro school summer.
Okay, Walter, and then the other, I mean, Stuart.
What I wanted to do, because he had a motion on the floor, and I wanted to second his amendment. If it's okay with Stuart.
Well, I'm with you, except, you know, when I'm not. But I, I am unclear as to whether we can kind of create this orally and be totally satisfied with it. But what, what about if we voted for the mo, voted on the motion that we've just heard, which has those additions in it, but realizing we may not have captured everything that we asked that it be re-referred to us, so that we might refine it further or not. But, but that we approve it, but ask that it be re-referred to us for, for the refinement if necessary. Does that make any sense?
It does make sense, yes.
I'll add that to the amendment.
Would we keep the public hearing, would we keep the public hearing open?
I'll add that to the amendment, that it would be referred back to us, and the comment, public hearing will remain open.
And the period of time is from June, July, August.
Metro school schedule.
Metro school schedule. Walter.
Yeah, I have one more question. We, we was talking about these items that we want to take a look at to make sure they're working with the community, such as the notices, the communications with the constituents. I was just wondering how we're going to monitor that. Do we ask staff to come up with some kind of process that we can use to make sure we can follow some kind of guidelines to pull it off? Or how are we going to structure that where it can be monitored? Stuart.
I don't know.
Rick.
Well, I mean, again, it's a matter of, one, clarifying what the commission's asking for. If you're asking for a broader notice, if they are going to go through an official amendment process, we can sit down with the applicant and identify an area that would be appropriate to notice. We can do that. And then, any, any future applications would, that would be their notice area. Yeah. I mean, that'd be better than suggesting, you know, 1,300 feet, 1,400 feet, because the way the roads run and the hills and everything else, it'd be better to just pick an area and define that.
Okay, if the make of the motion would clarify.
I'd like to, to say one thing. I want to let you guys know that they did, the community meeting was not a required community meeting. We asked that they hold the community meeting, and they agreed to do that. And that the typical boundary for the letters of notice is 600 feet. They've expanded that. We basically worked with them. We came up with an area that we thought was adequate, as far as along Old Hickory Boulevard, I mean, I'm sorry, along White's Creek, properties that we thought would be most impacted. And we notified those persons. Now, whether that was perfect or not, but I just wanted to let you know that we did expand it, and that they weren't required to have that meeting.
Were they required? The notice, the required notice was for this meeting, that you're talking about.
Yeah, but, no, yeah, but we actually, this was a community meeting, and we caught, we used the same notice buffer for this meeting.
Yes, the make of the motion to restate the motion.
All right. The, the motion is to approve with an amendment to limit the weekday performances to three during the non-school months.
Right. To, basically, the three are limited to the time period where the Davidson County School calendar ends the one year and starts the next, and that the bill be re-referred, the public hearing remain open, and that it's disapproved without those conditions.
Everything that you just said, yes.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second.
I second it.
Okay, we've got a motion, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstained.
One abstained. Okay, motion carries. Commission's going to take a 10-minute break.
All right. Thank you. Item nine on the agenda is for 1813 Beach Avenue. Before you tend it, it's a request to rezone from R8, oop, went a little too fast, from R8 to SPR, to permit up to seven detached residential units. Just to get our bearings, we have 8th Avenue south on the east, and Wedgewood Avenue along the south in the Edge Hill neighborhood. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The zoning here is R8, one and two family residential. The policy that we are looking at for this property, which is highlighted in red, is single-family detached in Neighborhood General. Right below the property at 1813 Beach Avenue is mixed housing in Neighborhood General. That's the land use policy. And I'm going to head back here to this aerial. It is a nursing home facility, and they had a fairly big expansion not too long ago. The applicant has provided a site plan. So, for the seven detached residential units, they are formatted in a U shape, so there is a courtyard in the middle, along with sidewalks connecting all the units in the courtyard. Unit one and unit two will face onto Beach Avenue. Unit one will be the only one with Beach Avenue access, while units two through seven will all use the alley that's surrounded on the south and the west. Before I forget, there is also a proposed landscape buffer on the north between this property and the property north of it, for about five feet. This is a colored rendition, and I'll pass over that one. One of the items we'd like to talk about, along with the 13 identified conditions of approval, is that staff worked with the developer, and we'd like to add a new condition, number 14, for the planning commissioner's consideration. We'd like to recommend approval with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, including number 14 as follows. Units one and two, the ones that are facing Beach Avenue, shall be limited to a maximum of 2.5 stories in 35 feet of maximum height measured to the ridge. Architecture shall be bungalow or craft, craftsman style in nature to blend in with adjacent homes along Beach Avenue. Now, the other two, I'm sorry, the other five units that are proposed can have a height limit of 35 feet and three stories. Just want to make sure that we called that out, because that was an addition after your staff report went out. This SP is consistent with Neighborhood General land use policy and meets some critical planning goals, supports a variety of transportation choices, supports infill development, creates walkable neighborhoods, and promotes compact building design. In conclusion, staff does recommend approval with conditions and including number 14.
Thank you. Item is open for public hearing. The applicant will be allowed 10 minutes. You may hold to back for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Michael Garrigan. I'm a civil engineer with Dale &amp; Associates, 516 Heather Place. We feel that the subject lot for this proposed SP is tailor-made in the perfect location for an infill development, and it will further provide the needed transition from the intense zoning and traffic along Wedgewood into the quieter local street of Beach. Currently, this is the first lot adjacent to the large nursing home on Wedgewood, prior to commuting into the more single-family residential pattern along Beach. We structured this plan to meet as many of the commission's primary goals, four of which are listed in the staff report, while also created the needed, creating the needed transition from Wedgewood and blending in with the fabric of the existing streetscape. The front two units have been located and designed to have comparable setbacks and massing of the neighboring homes along Beach, while tucking the infill portion behind, screening from public view, and access, all, all which are accessed by the existing alleyways and frame the centralized courtyard. All departments, including the staff, have recommended their approval, as the proposed plan meets, meets each department's standards, and as it complies with the single-family detached Neighborhood General policy. As we feel this is a well-designed transition piece from one of Nashville's busiest corridors into a quiet side street, it provides comparability with neighboring lots along its frontage, and meets the approval of all associated departments, we ask for your approval and adoption, the staff report. Thank you so much.
Then, one in the audience wishing to speak in support. Then, one in the audience wishing to speak in opposition.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Bass, and I live at 1806 Elliot Avenue. And I just have some questions. I have questions about the traffic flow and parking. I'm on the other end of the alley. I've seen a lot of, a lot more traffic since the signature retirement home has rebuilt its property. And Beach itself, it has a median in the middle of the street. That is a very small street with that median in the middle, and I think that's going to create more traffic on that street. Also, there's the reservoir that sits above these properties, and I think I read somewhere where that's on a flood plain. I think years ago, 60, 70 years ago, I think it had a crack in there, and it flooded that whole area over there. Also, I wanted to know if these properties, if, if approved, would it be for rental or for purchase? And there's a lot of, there's a lot of unnecessary traffic that's been in the alley. They're dumping trash back there. And I think one thing it's going to do to the neighborhood is, it's going to kind of change. I realize it's going to change the looks probably for the better, but it's, it's just a lot of unnecessary traffic and burglaries, and I feel like putting these units there is going to even bring... And I feel like putting these units there is going even bring more kind of unwanted stuff in the neighborhood. And that's all I have.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Hampton. I live at 1809 Beach Avenue, which is two doors up from the planned location for the seven houses. As you know, Beach Avenue is a very short street. We have an island in the middle. I have lived there 24 years. It's approximately 20 single-family homes in that area. Maybe the tallest house is two stories. You talk about two and a half stories and three stories. You put seven houses on one lot. That's a neighborhood in itself. I am definitely opposed to having that many houses in that area. I know people wanting to move back into the inner city and tearing down one house to put multiple units there to accommodate these people. I think that's a disservice to the other residents in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jennifer O'Neil-Luke. And my husband and I bought the lot and built the house right next to it, at 1811 Beach Avenue. We bought the lot and renovated the house. We kept the house, the original house, and renovated it to keep the look of the neighborhood. It's a beautiful tree-lined area, and then we extended backwards. We have the biggest lot in the neighborhood. The concept of having seven units there representing perhaps 28 people with the parking underneath is a big concern. And yet, we also have not seen any kind of drawings or renderings of what it would look like. I'm sure the commission will keep the level of construction right, but we have concerns about that. The parking, the amount of people, and they already cut down all the trees next door. So the integrity of the neighborhood is what we're concerned about.
And what else? What's speaking in opposition? Second, now you've got two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I jotted down some notes. I'll run through them briefly. There was some concern about traffic and parking. We maintain all the ingress egress with the exception of unit one to come in off the existing alleys, so there's no change in traffic flow or patterns. Each unit has a two-car garage with some visitor spacing off the alleys, and the alleys will be improved to the Public Works standard. So any issues today with dumping trash, things of that nature, those will all be cleaned up, as well as the alley being widened just a couple of feet. The property certainly not in a floodplain whatsoever. And then the other one, you know, it just has to do with really just the whole density aspect of it. I would say that this one's a little bit unique than anything else up and down Beach, because it is immediately adjacent to and almost shares a parking lot with the nursing home that is, you can see here, a very large-scale, essentially a commercial use. So the way we kind of looked at this is, one, it's a transitional piece into the neighborhood, and, two, if it's view shed or it's streetscape from Beach is maintained, which we feel like we have done, then that's accomplishing the transition from Wedgewood into the neighborhood while also providing for the housing choices in the infill that we're constantly struggling to figure out. But I really do appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Declare the public hearing closed. Greg, you got to remove yourself on this one.
No. I don't have to abstain on this one. So a couple of questions came up, and I think parking, so from this schematic parking, there's two car units for each garage, and then there's, is that three units in between the two, three parking spots in between?
Yep, you are correct. Those are proposed to have three units along the alley on the south for additional parking spaces.
On the traffic piece, I guess I need to ask the question, and I'm not sure if Public Works is here, but would this, do you think, does the department feel that this would deteriorate the traffic? Where's the parking guys? No, there's no parking.
I'm thinking about here in Public Works.
What was the question? We can't hear you.
Oh, the question is, the department's not here, but I guess in terms of maybe the staff maybe could ask, do you think that this would deteriorate traffic in the area or any of the causes?
Since, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. Since the department's not here to respond, you can flip to the traffic table in the staff report. It does identify the change going from R8 to SPR, and then the third one down identifies that change between the two of them. There would be a slight increase for those.
But that wouldn't deter the traffic issue, make a detriment?
I talked to Public Works. They had to leave early due to the length of this meeting, but they did indicate that the alley, well, part of their recommendation, if you see in the staff report, is to improve the alley so that it can accommodate this level of traffic. Given, like Michael stated, given the location of this property adjacent to the assisted living or the nursing home facility and sort of off, right off of Wedgewood, as a transitional area, we felt like this was a more appropriate place where there would be more traffic coming in and out of the site.
Okay. The other question I had was, as far as, there were some density questions, and I was reading through the report, and I know that it's a Neighborhood General policy, and the staff stated that it was consistent with the policy as a single-family detached. And could you just expand on that just a little bit more?
I mean, the Neighborhood General policy allows for a range of densities, and seven units on this property is about 14 units per acre, which is within the maximum range of what Neighborhood General would allow. So given that, we felt like, and given the location just north of Wedgewood, near a sort of a non-residential, a larger, more commercial-like building, we felt like this was an appropriate location for more density.
Thank you. That's all. Question I have.
Andrew.
Could we see the, I guess it was an aerial that showed the street? Yeah. Well, that, and also, we have a map in front of us that shows it is actually a very short street. That's about it. I'm interested in the transition. I mean, we sometimes square off sections that we say, well, if that could kind of fit within the square of the commercial, you could kind of consider it as a place that would make sense, even though it's different from everything else. You could see it as transition. I'm just concerned about the whole street and the sensitivity to such a short street that has such a distinctive characteristic.
That's part of the reason that extra condition was added that Letitia discussed, condition number 14, that would require that the units along Beach, the front on Beach, are more consistent in character with the architectural style along Beach Avenue. So that was the intent of that additional condition.
And the other houses on the street are two and a half stories in general? Is that, or they might have attics that raise the roof, the peak away from the street?
I think that's approximately right.
Okay. I wondered if, with that in mind, if the front, and again, for diversity of housing, if the front two units maybe could be combined into one unit that fronts the street so that it did feel, from the street reads a single-family like all the others, and then there's a more diverse array of choices even within that site. I'm just throwing that idea out there. I don't know if it's a good one or if the developer could afford it, but it just, it might create a different housing stock type to add into that mix instead of having all of them be exactly the same, and it would present the street with another single-family house. It's just a thought. I'm not sure. I want to hear from my colleagues.
So Beach has been, although it's R zoning, it's R8. Tell us what exactly is on the ground there on both sides of Beach as you go back toward Argyle.
Sure. Along Beach Avenue on the east side, there are a total of three identified duplex or multifamily units. There are two also going onto Argyle if you go towards the west. The rest of them are considered single-family housing.
It is a very unique street, particularly with the median, and it's in a rapidly developing area, too. So I certainly understand the concerns that have been expressed. I know the nursing home facility has recently expanded and changes the feel of the area, and I feel like this will, too. It's going to make the rest of Beach seem very different. I also know that we have a strong understanding, which we occasionally are consistent with in terms of wanting reasonable density where we can get it. And this is pretty close to all sorts of transit, pretty close to commercial, and is a very desirable kind of rapidly developing area. And so I think I understand why the staff has recommended this, because it is a transitional kind of use. I just feel we're losing something with Beach there. But I actually do believe that the look of it, from what I can tell, is going to be possibly an improvement. I don't know. It's a traditional issue of, we feel like it's a larger social goal, we need to promote some density, particularly in the urban parts of Nashville, and people don't want the change. And they don't where I live either, and I get that.
Mr. Chairman, just to say one thing about this. Staff worked pretty hard to work with the developer in terms of designing it to maintain the rhythm of the street in terms of the housing. That's where the conditions were in here. And I think there may be a little more read into this than actually will appear on the ground. The really successful cottage developments, the one we have in Germantown, the one we have in East Nashville, both of those have been extremely successful at the street level of maintaining the rhythm of the street. And the units behind them, while they're there and increase the density, they don't impact the feel of the neighborhood. And I think that was much of the same thing we were working with the developer to try to retain in this situation.
So when you actually look at it after the structures are built, it will, looking at it from the street back toward it, it will blend in a little bit more than it might look here.
Right. The setback is consistent along the west side of Beach, and the rhythm of the buildings are trying to be maintained.
Okay. Lily?
When the first hearing that seven detached units are proposed to go on the street, it's a little shocking, obviously, looking at the character of the street as it currently is. And we heard the neighbors' concerns regarding traffic and just the look and feel of the neighborhood. But I guess when you take into consideration the alleyways that are going to be used, so not as much traffic that would otherwise go into Beach would be going onto Beach Avenue, and then you look at the nursing home and the parking lot and the proximity where that is right now to the residential area on Beach, and then also, as Rick was saying, the streetscape and the developer doing a lot of work with planning to make the street at least look similar. If this proposed development were to happen, it doesn't, it's not, what was originally offensive isn't really offensive to me anymore after hearing and reading and learning all about that. So I think I agree with staff's recommendation if all of these conditions were agreed to by the developer.
There's actually a similar situation in our neighborhood, and this was kind of frowned upon at first when it was brought up, where there was a single, excuse me, a single-family residence that was turned into a very wonderful neighborhood. And it is so popular that when one becomes available now, it's grabbed up real quick. So I think this is a very good idea, and I think that it'll add to the neighborhood rather than subtracting.
Walter.
Yeah, help me understand, what's on this piece of property now? Is it one house?
So right now, there's no structure or structures on the home, on the property. What it was before was identified as, the assessor identified it as residential miscellaneous or combo. So to be believed to be two family at this point, or two separate families.
And they're proposing to build, how many cottages is on that?
Seven detached.
Okay. Help me, what's on, facing Beach? What's on the left side of that property?
All right, I have the pointer out.
Right there.
Right here?
No, no, the left, the other side.
The other side.
Other side of Beach.
On Beach, over here.
Yeah, Beach.
Okay.
My house.
Your house?
Yeah, it's above it.
Now, go back across Beach, now that lot, right, drop down one lot, now, right there. What is that?
Yep, it's a residential home.
One home.
One home.
Long.
Wow, okay. And on the other side, you got the parking lot with the nursing home.
Correct.
Okay. All right. It seems like that that's going to be work right in there because of the fact that you don't have a lot of houses already existing there. Is that right? You got one houses on the lot you're going to build on.
Well, yes. I mean, technically, there's no house on there now, but yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'm okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'm sorry. You said there were a number of duplexes already on the street? I missed that count.
No, that's a good question. I don't have the slide for you, I'm sorry. There are a total of three identified of duplexes on the east side of Beach Avenue, and then two along Argyle on the south side of Argyle. So I'm sorry, I don't have that slide for you tonight, but I did take a look at that.
Stuart.
Well, I...
There's no duplexes on Beach. I don't know where that came from. It's not, not one. Not one.
There's no duplexes on Beach.
Stuart, you've got the floor.
There are single-family homes.
Public hearing closed.
Okay. The, I believe that given what we are trying to do in urban Nashville in terms of trying to protect the streetscape, trying to protect the setbacks, trying to protect the feel, and at the same time adding some density where we can, I believe the staff has basically done what we expect them to do and has recommended a very inappropriate change, even though I know it will be disappointing to folks who are used to what it's been, which is a long way around to say that I move we approve staff recommendation.
Is there a second? Motion second, all in favor?
May I ask you a question? I have a question. I just have a sort of devil's advocate view. There, I see empty lots over in that area, and I remember with another street, we talked about, as much as we want to add density in the urban places where there are utilities and all the transit and everything that we need, if there's certain places that are unique character, sometimes we protect them in the middle of all that. We did it not long ago off of 12th Avenue South. And I see a few lots, even in this picture, that are empty, and wonder if it would be valid to protect that little tiny microcosm and infill around it so that one little microcosm stays whole. And I'm really torn. I don't know. I mean, I could say, like I said before, we could square up that commercial site and put this cluster lot, I mean, this cottage homes there, and make it a transition and make... homes there, and make it a transition and make sense. Or we could say the alley is a demarcation, and everything to the north of the alley ought to be just like the rest of Beach and not be touched, and be ready for another single-family home to be put there. And then it's just a question. We raised it once before, and I wonder if it's worth applying to this little street or not.
Our feeling was that the cottage development with the scale and the conditions we hear would have been better than what they could put by right, which would be your duplexes in this area, so.
We got a motion second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Ready for item number 10.
All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Item 10 is for 942 Riverside Drive. This is a request to rezone from an existing SP residential to SP residential to permit up to 11 dwelling units on property located on Riverside Drive, south of Rosebank Avenue and east of Waters Avenue. Staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. All right, so this property is currently zoned SP. This was an SP that was approved in 2007. Surrounding zoning includes CS, CL, and R10. The policy in this area is neighborhood center, and the proposed SP is consistent with the neighborhood center policy. The proposal meets two critical planning goals. It supports a variety of transportation choices. Also, it supports infill development. And here we have a view of the plan. Access to the site will be from Waters Avenue. Again, they are proposing 11 attached residential units. Six of these units will have frontage on Riverside Drive. Three units will have frontage on Waters Avenue. And then we have two units that are facing towards the north, the corner of the triangular parcel. Since these units both have side facades facing a street, it's really important that these units are designed in a way so that those side facades do address the street appropriately. No elevations have been included with the preliminary, however. They will be submitted with the final and reviewed so that they do address the street appropriately. Several notes have been included to address the design of the buildings, and those include doorway placement, glazing, window orientation, and porches. Sidewalks are proposed along both street frontages, and there will be interior sidewalks that will connect the units to those, to that public sidewalk system. Here we have a view of the site from Waters Avenue looking down to Riverside Drive. Just another view, you can see how it slopes down toward Riverside Drive. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. Item's open for public hearing. An applicant be allowed 10 minutes. Can anybody hold 10 or two back for rebuttal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, again, my name is Michael Garrigan. I'm down associate to 516 Heather Place. Between Roy and I, we're running back and forth tonight. Melissa covered much of what I would say. I would add a couple of points. The lot, it's an awkward-shaped triangle with two, potentially, you could argue, three of its sides having road frontage, which was one of the big challenges when we started to work on this project. The land use policy is neighborhood center. It's located at or just immediately adjacent to. It's kind of even hard to figure that out when you look at the overall. At the intersection of Riverside and Rosebank, which are both very busy collector streets, all the other quadrants of that intersection are currently zoned commercial. Some of them are developed, perhaps underdeveloped. Others are still vacant. So when we were looking at this neighborhood center parcel, we certainly didn't think commercial would be appropriate because it's already there, just needs to be utilized instead of adding more to it. So that's why we stuck with the residential-only use for the SP. The plan was designed to have the units fronting and addressing all adjacent public roadways, Riverside, Rosebank, and Waters Avenue. And as Melissa stated, the ones that have frontage on two different streets will have two different facades to address each of the streets. The plan proposes to screen all the parking from public view in order to create a pedestrian-friendly streetscape, and limits the access to Waters Avenue only, which is much less traveled than Riverside or Rosebank, again, adding to the pedestrian atmosphere we're trying to create with this. We discussed the proposal with Councilman Westerholm, and you should have an email from him in support as part of your packet. And we're certainly willing to continue to move forward and continue to meet with everybody as we move through this process to work out the details. But as the plan complies with the neighborhood center policy, it meets the planning goals outlined in the staff report, and it's met the approvals of all the reviewing agencies. We ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. So, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Brett Withers. I live at 1113 Granada Avenue. Yes, I am here in support of an SP for higher density. I do feel like this particular site is a great use of an SP. It is an awkward site. This does provide an opportunity to provide kind of a creative solution to not only some traffic problems, to possibly create some true townhouse development in our neighborhood. Some of the things that get called townhouses, I wouldn't call townhouses, but I'm generally favorable to the site plan. I like the fact that it addresses all three corners. In particular, I like the fact that it addresses that point, which is a little bit undefined presently, and so I think helped bring a lot of clarity to that intersection for folks who are traveling south on Riverside. One other thing that I do like about the frontage on Riverside is it does have so many houses it brings to Riverside, and yet keeps the traffic onto Waters. I'm a volunteer and a board member of Friends of Riverside Drive, and we are working our way down the street, hope to get there maybe this year, if not next, for planting cherry trees and things down the street. So I'm involved in a lot of beautification efforts on Riverside itself. And so I believe that addressing that street in that particular area will be favorable to the pedestrian experience there, as well as maintaining the bikeway that's very heavily utilized there on Riverside. I think having the driveway access off of Waters is appropriate. But for this particular item, I do happen to be the neighborhood president of the Eastwood Neighborhood, which is adjacent to the west, and I would be happy to work with the applicant to schedule a community meeting for further discussion. It hasn't taken place yet, but I would urge approval at least at this stage, although I know there are some details yet to work out. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Cody DeVos. I live at 940 Riverside Drive, which my house is visible in that shot there. I'm in the lot right next door. I'm not really up here to speak in opposition, but I have questions, and we're talking about some of them out there. One of the things you'll notice if you look at the size of the buildings in that lot in the image, you'll see that one large house takes up a fair piece of that lot. I think the proposal here includes maybe up to 10 or 11 residences, which is a fair bit to have on land of that size. And again, I'm not opposed. I just want to see a little bit more of what that would look like. We have the kind of concerns that a next-door neighbor is likely to have noise, privacy, things like that. Want to make sure that if that many people are living in the lot right next to us, where we have kind of a single residence, that there's appropriate space between us, appropriate privacy for all parties involved, and that none of us are keeping the other ones awake at night. I think that height is a question that I have. And again, this isn't in opposition. It's just something that I'd like to learn more about. There's talk, and we were looking at some of the plans for potentially three stories, which seems a bit high. Two stories might be a little bit more in line with what goes on in the neighborhood surrounding it. So again, I would love to talk more about this with the developers. I think we probably will continue the conversation, but I wanted to raise some concerns here just from a neighbor perspective.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? See, you're not allowed two minutes for rebuttal.
Yeah, I think both speakers before me hit the nail on the head. We just need to keep working through more of the details and tying things down as far as the architecturals and things like that go. As far as tonight and the site plan itself, I don't think you've heard any significant objections to that. Screening with the neighbor next door, we spoke earlier, we're more than happy to add in a six-foot opaque fence. I thought, quite frankly, it was already in the plan. It's not pointed out clearly, but that will get added in there, too. So I think we're on the right track here, and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Clear the public hearing closed. Walter? Philip?
I have just one question. I have one question. Why are we changing from an SPR to an SPR?
Well, that's a good question. So there was a previous specific plan that was approved in 2007. At that time, it was for three units. So in order to increase that, obviously, they would have to rezone it, and the layout is somewhat different as well. So essentially, it's a new plan that would, I guess, override, if approved, the existing plan with three units.
Just inquiring minds, in 12 years, that's the first time I remember going from the same thing, whatever.
I understand.
Lilly?
No comments.
Stuart? Stuart, can you hear me? Want to make sure. Craig?
Chairman was shocked, no comment. The one thing I would point out is just for the neighbor's sake, there's a trash and recycling receptacle like right by the, right beside his house, so you might want to just maybe move that. I'm just saying, that would be my only concern, and making sure that the buffering is adequate.
Andre? Is there a motion?
Move approval with all conditions.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12.
Okay, my name's Bob Lehman. I'll be presenting item 12 for Carrie Logan, who is not here this evening. This is a request for a rezoning. We are located at the intersection of Division Street and Music Square West, right near the roundabout. Currently, these properties are zoned core frame and ORI, office and residential, and the request is to rezone to specific plan. And staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. And as you can see, this is the property outlined in red along Music Square West. And it does have split zoning today. The northern portion of the site is zoned core frame, and the southern portion of the site is zoned ORI. It falls within the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan's T5 Center Mixed-Use Neighborhood Land Use Policy and District Office Concentration Land Use Policy. And this request is for a regulatory SP. There's not a site plan at this time. It's more for zoning standards. And the standards of this SP include all uses permitted by MUIA zoning. There's a maximum height at the build-to line that will be determined at a later date with the final site plan, as well as the step back to be determined with the final site plan. The primary purpose of this SP is to allow more height than what would be permitted under the MUIA zoning district. This SP would allow 20 stories in 225 feet with a maximum FAR of six. So currently, the core frame allows an FAR of five, and this allows a glory ratio of six. So staff is recommending approval with conditions, as it is consistent with the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan land use policy. The policy does specify that height above the MUIA district is appropriate at certain locations, at strategic locations. And staff believes that this is a strategic location near the roundabout with more intensity surrounding the roundabout. There are already some office buildings that are taller in that particular area than along other portions of Music Road. So up near the roundabout, the height is appropriate. And in general, as we saw with the midtown rezoning last year, having MUIA standards are appropriate in the midtown area. So the primary purpose of this SP is the increase in height that would be allowed by the specific plan. With that, staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, Bob. So item is open for public hearing. An applicant be allowed 10 minutes. Do you keep two of those back for rebuttal?
Chairman McLean, members of the Commission, my name is Tom White. I live at 360 Club Court. I'm an attorney with Toon, Intcrikan, and White, and represent the applicant here today. Also with me today is Joni Priest, who was with this commission for some time, is with Hastings Architecture, and also David Chase of DF Chase is here. Those would be the three people doing the presentation. Would like to request the two minutes for rebuttal at the front end. I commented at the outset of this presentation that want to thank Council Lady Erica Gilmore. She's got an incredibly busy council manic district. There's any number of significant things taking place in her district. This is certainly one of them. Despite that, on relatively short notice, she scheduled a neighborhood meeting, which took place at Belmont Church. Within the last 10 days, it was a very productive meeting, probably 30, 35 people there. I think there was generally very good support for it. There have been a couple issues that have been raised, and we're making the commitment to this commission, as we have to Council Lady Gilmore, that we will continue to dialogue with anybody that has issues that need to be addressed. We don't think we may ever get unanimity, but we think we can get pretty close to it. Again, for anybody that comes to the mic that may have any opposition to it, I'd like it very clear that we intend to continue the dialogue with them. I ask you to approve this matter, and I think there's really five key reasons that are set out in the staff report. The first one is it's unequivocally consistent with the policy in this area. The next four items are really goals of the Planning Commission, which this project, in my opinion, is spot on. The first one is more intense development in a prominent location. That's exactly what we've got here. The second goal is that really only the FAR and height are asking to be varied here. And as the staff just commented, it's really a height issue, where it's a bump of an insignificant amount of height, basically 25 feet. The next goal is that it puts all the zoning under one hat. You've got split zoning on this property right now, and you've got the ORI, and you've got zoning that, under this proposal, puts it all under the SPMU. The other two zoning categories go away. They get wrapped under this one hat, which is important. Next is the staff has recommended so clearly, it basically is a proposal where you build up and not out, and that's exactly what's being asked for in this area. If you remember, at the front end of the meeting, Council Lady Gilmore came, and she requested this matter be approved, that she had a neighborhood meeting, wanted to continue the dialogue. We make that same commitment. Also, would conclude on the note that in the big picture for the city of Nashville, this is the very type of thing that the city continues to tout as they move forward with the type of development we want in the inner city. That's what the old CF was. The old core frame would certainly be supportive of this. We appreciate your courtesy, and we'll save the two minutes for rebuttal. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. It's strange to stand on center with you instead of off to the side, but good evening. This development site is currently four parcels, as you've seen, and they're split zoned, and that makes for a cumbersome development pattern when there's various setbacks and various regulations. So this new zoning would harmonize and put all four parcels in the same zoning district, and would require consistent regulations over the whole site. The SP will meet the standards of the major and collector street plan, adding street trees and widening the sidewalks to create a more walkable urban environment. The MUIA zoning district has a build-to zone that ensures an urban building that frames the street and contributes positively to the pedestrian realm and the walkability of the neighborhood. CF and ORI zoning do not have a build-to zone. They have setbacks, and they could allow parking in the front of the building. As mentioned in the staff report, the rezoning meets three of the Planning Commission's critical planning goals. The rezoning promotes compact building The rezoning promotes compact building design, supports infill development, and supports a variety of transportation choices. As staff mentioned, the planning policy is also very supportive, and the policy supports a variety of high-density uses in an urban development pattern. The height density and intensity allowed by this policy is second only to the policies that are, that guide the development downtown, which is kind of a hop, skip, and a jump from here. The zoning in Midtown was revised in 2000 and again in 2012, and this SP is based on an alternative zoning district, which is kind of the evolution of our understanding about zoning regulations. So this SP will contribute to the built environment by responsibly using existing infrastructure and redeveloping on an infill site. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Chase. I'm the developer for this project, also a local Nashvillian from here, born here, raised here, live in the district. I'm also the executive vice president of DF Chase Incorporated, which is the construction firm that be building this. So we rebuilt Opera Land Hotel after the flood, worked on the First Center. We've worked in the middle of Vanderbilt's campus while there are students around. We've worked, we've rebuilt, renovated St. Thomas Patient Tower while there's sick patients in it. So we're very conscious of our neighbors and the people that are working around. So we'll definitely, you know, I'm here to make that commitment that we communicate with our neighbors, and, you know, we have the best interest of the neighborhood and the community and Nashville as a whole in mind when we're doing this. So thank you for your review of this proposal.
Thank you. You do have two minutes left for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Felice Apelinski, and I'm from Gilda's Club, which is at 1707 Division Street. And while I use my two minutes, I ask that you consider people in your life who have been impacted by cancer. Three out of four families are impacted by cancer, and those are the people that we serve at Gilda's Club. I hope that you know we are a cancer-support community for men, women, and children with all kinds of cancer and their family members and friends. We provide social and emotional support, completely free of charge, to anyone impacted by any type of cancer at any point along the spectrum. So Gilda's Club is located at 1707 Division, and we strongly oppose the rezoning of the properties located at 7, 9, and 11 Music Square West. We also oppose the construction of the proposed Virgin Hotel on those sites. The clubhouse for Gilda's Club is located directly across the public alley from that proposed side of the hotel. As mentioned, we are a nonprofit offering support to anyone impacted by cancer. Our front door is actually located off that alley. All of our program participants, employees, and guests use that alley to reach us every single day. It's imperative for those participants to have easy access, as many of them have incredibly limited mobility in the midst of chemotherapy and radiation, perhaps using canes, walkers, and wheelchairs. We are busy with many hundreds of people coming in and out every single month. We plan over 100 support groups, educational workshops, and lectures every month, and we have an attendance of over 1,200 every month. We have programs that happen during the day, in the evening, and on weekends. The scale and intensity of this project is not appropriate for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mark Carver. I live at 1009 Greenwich Park, and I am the voluntary board chairman for Gilda's Club. I've been involved with Gilda's Club for more than a decade and fortunately get to serve as president now. We, the Gilda's Club location is across the alley, and this is a very, we understand that this property will be developed, and it's going to be developed with more intensity than it's there now. But to grant this height request and add to the, to the density and the traffic in this neighborhood, this is a very challenging site because they're on the roundabout, they're on the one-way street, and then they've got a very narrow alley that is the front door for most of those businesses. That's where everybody accesses their parking lots. So that alley is a terrible place to have service trucks, to have the exit from the garage for this hotel, for they have their employees coming in and out. It seems inevitable that they're going to try to use that alley, which backs up into Division, onto the roundabout every afternoon. And this is a very tough location. We understand the density issue, and we understand that Virgin Hotel is a sexy project, but we struggle to see why this is the right spot and how the intensity that it's going to bring is going to make sense for this neighborhood. So our board has voted unanimously to object to this. I will say the developers have communicated with us and want to talk to us about solving the traffic and access issues, but I encourage planning to look at these very hard because I think they're going to try to use that alley as if it's a major roadway, and it's just not going to make sense for this kind of project and for this neighborhood and for all the neighbors who need to get in and out of there every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sherry Jacobs. I, too, am on Gilda's Board, but also, my whole family goes to a facility that's two doors down from Gilda's Club on a weekly basis. And we use that alley not only to get into Gilda's Club as a board member every day and the 1,200 people who come to Gilda's Club every month for programs, but also some of these other buildings as well. I access one of those on a weekly basis in the alley. That alley is one-way, even though it's an in and out, and I've often been stuck behind trucks, delivery trucks, or just trucks who are kind of lost perhaps, for 10 minutes at a time, easily late to a doctor's appointment, et cetera, because those are, there are few of those that are doctors behind that, and that's, one of those buildings is a doctor that we visit on a regular basis. So I firsthand experienced the traffic of this alley. There's nowhere to go. If you look at the alley, there's a house sitting right on the, basically on the alley, if you will. And I've been stuck behind the roundabout. But on behalf of, as a board member, you know, what's most important to us is that our members get access to Gilda's Club, and the entrance is a budding to where this hotel would be. And Gilda's does operate until 8:00 at night, so between the taxis and the delivery trucks starting in the morning through the night, we're concerned about the access and the traffic that's already really a problem in this area. And for the board, we'd like to, on behalf of the board, we'd like to just let everyone have a copy of just what to look at, how many programs we do on a monthly basis, and every dime comes, that goes to Gilda's in Middle Tennessee, stays in Middle Tennessee, and helps anybody affected by cancer in Middle Tennessee.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Let's see if the same person. Seeing none, two minutes for rebuttal. Sorry. Keep forgetting Tom White. Keep trying.
Chairman, members of the commission, first of all, my client can't be any more complimentary of Gilda's Club. They're an absolute first-class group, and we intend to be first-class neighbors to them. The principal thing you heard about fell into two categories. The first one was the alley. Our plans clearly will mandate an improvement of the alley. We've got the same interests in making that alley accessible to Gilda's Club as we do for our client. Mindful of the fact that Public Works will clearly be involved to make sure that alley functions the way that it's supposed to. We wouldn't do anything legally or morally that would impact Gilda's operation, but Public Works will be the absolute guarantee that we've got to do something that takes into account all of their property rights and ours. But we make the commitment to this group today that we are firmly committed that that alley access be one that we will clearly be conciliatory about. We intend to use the alley, but we intend to do it on a joint basis that's of best interest to both. The other issue that was talked about had to do with the uses on the property, and if the staff will tell you, it's insignificantly different than what we can do right now. You bumped the height from 200 to 225 feet, and you basically put the current uses on the four parcels under one use, which is this SPMU, which is clearly what the city's heading for. But again, we made the commitment to you that we've reached out to people, we'll continue to reach out to them, and we make the commitment that this goes on to the legislative process, hopefully with an approval here. We take nothing for granted. We continue to work with everyone, not just those that came today, but everyone else. We appreciate your courtesies and support. Thank you for your time.
Clear the public hearing, close. Lilly?
Sure, I have a question for the applicant. I don't know if this is the proper stage to ask this, but obviously, the big concern is the alleyway. I mean, are there any specifics of what the developer is planning to do to accommodate Gilda's Club and all of their concerns?
We've just made the commitment, since it's only at the beginning of the process, that we would work with them, and we'd do whatever Public Works mandated. Public Works is not going to allow us to use that alley in a manner that's detrimental of Gilda's Club. We just can't get there, period. But it doesn't just mean to us, the Public Works Department, mandating something. We're reaching out and hoping that there may be times when we can share additional parking that we've got that could be of a great asset. We think we can be a huge asset to Gilda's Club in a lot of ways. But where we are right now, all we can do is tell you that we heard the concerns about the alley. We haven't had the time to sit down and discuss this matter. I know some of these folks very well. We need that time to dialogue with them about how we can make it better. But as far as the alley itself, we're committing to you and to the city that we're going to do whatever the Public Works Department tells us we can do and use the alley in a manner that's clearly going to be an improved alley. Public Works is going to mandate an improvement of this alley. We're going to be funding that. We want to do it in a conciliatory tone.
Okay, thank you.
Philip? Walter?
I have no comments.
Craig? It's up to you.
Well, my family and I have significant connections with Gilda's Club, and it's one of our favorite organizations in Nashville. I know we have all seen this before, and it is never easy to predict or believe upfront, but this improvement on this property with close attention to detail by this company, but by everybody else watching it, will ultimately result in a better situation than is there now, which seems counterintuitive, but we see it all the time where drainage problems, for instance, can't be fixed until there's a redevelopment of the area. And sometimes alleys go on for decades like this one, which has probably needed to be fixed for some time. So I'm not, I am not hesitant to vote for this in spite of those connections. I will be very surprised and disappointed if it is not something that in the final analysis works out for the best interest, not just of this hotel, but for the surrounding area. It is, in fact, a signature area. It's been in the news lately, of course. You know, it's one of those areas that is not residential. It is not even minor league office or commercial. It is heavily urban, right there by the roundabout. And as you go further out, Music Row, it becomes much less so, and there's, in fact, even a historic overlay. But this did not, never has had a historic overlay, never presented to us for the record in case some of you are watching some of the media attention now. The Planning Commission has never, ever, ever, in history, rejected a proposal for a conservation or a historic overlay, ever, and we would not opt for this. But we do have property rights, and the family did not want that, and that's why it's here. It was their choice. So with all of that said, I absolutely believe Mr. White on this because it's in the best interest of his client, besides which, he wouldn't lie to us. Most of the time, he wouldn't lie to us. So anyway, that's what I think about it. And at the right time, I'll be having to move.
This is the right time.
Well, I would move that we approve this, but with the explicit understanding that it'd be referred, since this is a broad and not very specific proposal, of course, that it'd be referred back to this, to the planning department for site plan approval consistent with the general plan.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is item number 17 on your agenda. This is a request for a final plat to create two single-family residential lots on a one-acre parcel located at the northwest corner of Castleman Drive and Tremble Road. This site is located in the Green Hills area, south of Hobbs Road and west of Hillsborough Pike. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove. It's worth noting that there was previously a duplex constructed on the lot. That duplex has since been removed from the site. However, the applicant is pursuing permits to reconstruct or reestablish two dwellings on the lot as a duplex. The code allows you to reconstruct non-conforming duplexes in RS districts within two years. So using that provision of the code, again, to construct two dwelling units on this lot today. This subdivision requests is to establish two lots so that these two structures can exist, fee simple, as opposed to two dwellings on a single lot. Again, staff's recommendation is to disapprove. Subject property is zoned RS20. It's surrounded by similarly zoned RS20 lots to the west and to the south, southwest. R20 lots are located to the north and to the east of the site. This is an infill subdivision. It's guided by the RL, the residential low policy, and subject to the infill compatibility criteria. That criteria attempts to ensure that proposed lots are compatible with surrounding lots. Surrounding lots are defined as those five lots on either side of you on the same, in the same block, on the same block face, oriented to the same street. This subdivision proposes to establish two lots that will be oriented to Tremble Road. Going back to the map, you'll note that there are no other lots on this block oriented to Tremble Road, so there are no surrounding lots for staff to use to compare this subdivision with. As such, this subdivision, it's required that this subdivision be presented to the Planning Commission for approval. The Planning Commission is, has to make a determination of compatibility, essentially by using the larger area, the surrounding area, to determine, again, whether this subdivision is consistent with the infill subdivision regulations. Again, the applicant proposes to create two single-family residential lots. Lot one would establish a lot area of .46 acres. Lot two would establish a lot area of .54 acres. This subdivision would establish street setbacks along Tremble Road as well as Castleman Drive. Subdivision would establish a 40-foot street setback on Tremble and a 60-foot street setback on Castleman. Those setbacks are consistent with the original plat for this area. However, you'll note, the structure just to the west of this site is set back at 90 feet, and that 60, that proposed 60-foot street setback off of Castleman is not consistent with that house. However, it's also worth noting that the house just to the west of the neighbor has recently been permitted and is already framed at 60 feet off of Castleman. The subdivision has established several notes to attempt to assure that what gets constructed is essentially compatible with the surrounding context. The notes are related to garage orientation. There's a restriction of garage orientation to Tremble Road. There's a restriction on parking between the houses and Tremble Road. There's also a restriction of access for Lot Two strictly to Castleman, and then there's a restriction on the proposed house height to, for both houses at two stories. Again, just to reiterate, the purpose of this subdivision is to establish two fee simple lots around the houses that are in the permit process already. The staff has reviewed the subdivision and determined that the proposed lots are not compatible, or our recommendation is that the proposed lots are not compatible with those found in the surrounding area, surrounding area being west and southwest of the site. Most, the majority of those lots are platted at one acre or just under one acre. Again, these two lots would come in at just around half, one-half an acre. So in conclusion, staff's recommendation is to disapprove.
Thank you. Item's open for public hearing. An applicant be allowed 10 minutes. You may keep two back for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, my name's Michael Garrigan, 516 Heather Place. I'm speaking today on behalf of the applicant and the owner of the property of this item. There's no doubt to me that this, this was a difficult item and a difficult item for the staff to review. However, I certainly see their point However, I certainly see their point of view. I would like to reiterate a couple of facts, though. One is, for the way that the proposed lots are planned to orient, there's no context to compare them to, which is why this case is before you. But I think another very critical point here is that this is a legal two-family lot. If you go back to one of the overall slides, the horizontal property regime has been recorded. It's my understanding that houses are state. So we're not talking about increase in density, or are they building two, or aren't they building two. Two homes are permitted for this property. What the applicant proposed through the staff report that I thought was a pretty, a nice gesture is, as of today, he's permitted anything that's allowed under the code, three stories in height, 50% maximum building coverage of the lot, no organization of where his access comes from, where his parking can be, where his garage doors are. And what the conditions set forth in the plat that have been agreed upon is limiting that height to two stories, organizing the access better, not permitting parking in front of either of the structures. And so I thought that that was a great attempt or effort on his behalf. Now, as far as trying to find context or comparability, I see that, you know, the majority of the property shown on the screen is to the southwest. However, if it showed more to the northeast, it would show a different picture. West of the property is clearly one-acre lots. East of the property is clearly half-acre lots. North of the property is a bit of a mixture, some one-acre, some half, some quarter acre. So the context is a challenge. You know, I don't think there's a precedent here. I think that this is incredibly unique in the fact that it is a legally nonconforming two-family lot in an RS district. I don't know that there's any one other like it in this particular area. So I think what we're trying to put before you is, at the end of the day, would we like two single-family homes on single-family lots with each homeowner owning their property, their house, their driveway, along with the other items that are listed in the staff report? Or what's currently permitted today, which is a horizontal property regime, ownership in common, two-family lot? With that, I'll save the rest for rebuttal. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Heidi Welch, 4010 Wallace Lane. I live about a half mile from this proposal. There's a little bit of convoluted. I wasn't quite clear in the neighborhood newsletter that why this is, I guess it's technically declared a duplex, but it was one house and a basement apartment and somehow got designated as duplex. So there hasn't been two construction, two houses on this lot before. And that's a very confusing issue to me, how that ever got passed as a duplex. I hope you disapprove this request. This request does not fit the character of our neighborhood as the person who just spoke was saying, what a unique proposition this is. Subdivision rules state that proposals be harmonious and meet neighborhood patterns. This does not. The RS zoning that's designated on the map is a little misleading because, as was pointed out, really, most of the properties surrounding all of this has a character more of an RS30 or RS40 because almost all of these properties have one house on one acre or two-thirds of an acre. And the zoning just doesn't match what the character of our neighborhood is. This proposal plans to build two huge houses, one 7,000-plus square foot, one 4,000-plus square foot, which will take away a lot of land and have very little yard. That's not in the character of our neighborhood. We don't need any more extra construction or more density in Green Hills because there has been construction and density consistently for the last decade.
Well, I guess it's evening now. It started out afternoon when I got here, but... My name is Charlotte Cooper, 3409 Tremble Road. I am, there is one house between my property and this property, and of course, Castleman Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opposition to this request. And this property is unique, and if the block face was longer, we wouldn't be having this hearing today because it would have been disapproved. However, even with this short block face, the property is not an island separated from other properties. There are properties beside it, even though it's oriented toward Hobbs Road. There's a property behind it that's oriented toward Castleman, and there's a property across Castleman from it oriented toward Castleman. Both houses will be oriented toward Tremble Road, with both proposed subdivided lots being considerably smaller than the other lots. In fact, both lots fall under the 70% of the average size and frontage for the surrounding lots. And although Zoned RS, the previous house was determined, I guess, to be legally a duplex, even though it was originally built as a single-family house and they added an apartment in the basement. Consequently, the owner plans to exercise his right to build a replacement duplex. The representative for the applicant said they were making concessions on height, et cetera, but 7,000 square feet and 4,400 square feet side by side on this lot, that's not really making concessions, I don't think. Subdividing and creating two smaller lots could have a negative impact on our neighborhood, and so I hope you will go along with the recommendation of the staff and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? You'll be allowed two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief. Again, the discussion is not whether or not to permit two units. That's permitted today. The discussion is whether those units are constructed through traditional two-family construction or two-single-family lots. I would throw one more statement, is the units are proposed to address Tremble. So if you were looking for any form of context to look at, I would suggest that you look to the other side of Tremble, which, at that point, a lot of the focus has been along Castleman, where there's another side of that intersection, too, where there are lots that are comparable with what are proposed. Thank you.
Public hearing closed. Walter? Philip?
I'm in agreement with staff.
Lilly?
While I do understand that the applicant could actually build two detached units on the property without anything being approved by us, I do find the staff's analysis and the neighbor's concerns persuasive.
Stuart?
Well, I think I do understand the negative effect of dividing the lot, and I just wondered if the staff discussed at all with the applicant an SP so that we could control the conditions if he were to go forward with a horizontal property regime, or if it's sort of such an either-or extreme. Would that be an option from?
We didn't discuss...
I mean, we sort of get one or the other. You have to subdivide and get what you want, or you get whatever we're going to give you. That's what I feel over the barrel a little.
We didn't discuss the SP option. I'm not sure that we'd go down that path, anyway. The only gain that they would get through an SP, because they already have the rights for two units on one lot, would be to create two separate lots out of this property. And from an analysis perspective, we'd be in the same boat.
All right.
Is there a motion?
Move to disapprove, as recommended by staff.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to recognize this as Dwayne's last meeting with us and express our appreciation to all the hard work he has done and just, he's kind of hung in there with a lot of very difficult cases, and we certainly appreciate his work.
I might point out, you never know because we thought last week was Phil's last.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to have that same, I think we have that condition that he can't leave until he's had a replacement. Is that right, Bob?
All right. Report from the boards and parks.
We had a very good meeting. In fact, it was a very lengthy meeting at Shelby Bottoms Nature Center this last time and had some controversy. It was an interesting meeting. That's all. The director's report and I think...
Before that, you've got the executive committee's report, which is the election committee, election of officers.
Is that on the executive committee?
It's where it is because it isn't anywhere else.
Well, we met executive committee, was only foreign about three years ago. We've been electing officers for a long time.
I know, but it's not on the agenda, and you need to elect officers.
Well, I was going to...
Okay, you can do that at the end. All right.
Let me just go ahead and do the director's report, if you would, and we're going to discuss the rehearing.
Okay, the director's report, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, includes the finding by the executive director and the chairman regarding the rehearing request of the Vista Cluster Lot subdivision. It is on the director's report, and we laid out the options that you have. The only other key issue in the director's report that I want to notice is that we will be beginning the review of the futures next month in June for Nashville Next, a main change in direction in terms of trying to make final decisions. That will lead to the overall community-wide vision coming to the summer, and then that community-wide vision will set the stage for the updates to the community plans in the fall. And we'll be going at your next meeting in a little more detail of all the community engagement opportunities that we have before that. So with that, there needs to be a motion to accept the executive director's report and any other action that you wish to take.
Can we discuss it first? I just wanted, because we've been offered, I mean, we've been appealed to discuss this situation with White's Creek, and I think tonight, the point was, we could decide among ourselves whether we wanted to try and move it forward to another meeting. I feel like we should at least make an understanding of what is happening. And I think, my understanding, if I can try and say it, I would like to try and see if everybody is in concurrence with where we are. In our subdivision regulations, right now, we've defined infill regulations, and then sort of everything is, our regulations are everything else. You're either infill or you're not. And my understanding in the meeting, well, let me back up. We also know that we've talked about after a period of time, that since we have the transect in place, our city, we've already talked about how we have infill, we're very urban, we have transition places, we have suburban, and we go on forward all the way to rural. And what we've decided as a commission is that, it's not a speedy process, but we want to match our subdivision regulations to those various definitions of what kind of properties are out there. But at the moment, all we have is infill or everything else. And so my understanding from this meeting was that the staff prior to the meeting had determined that this was not infill, that, and my guess is the reason they talked about it was that, in general, that is thought of presumably as a very developed area. And so I was assuming that the appeal request would be that we would consider this on a microcosm, and we would have expected new information to come forward that would define somehow this as a microcosm or justification of why it would be infill. And I don't think we received specific information like that, but we could ask the staff to calculate and see how many of these smaller lots were actually built out and had houses on them, and if in that way, we related, there's a subdivision behind it, there are lots around it, if that were to be called infill, then we would have to look at how we considered it differently than what the staff had originally said when they determined that it was an infill. That's a possibility. And I just wanted to say that, I just want to be clear on what it is, is being asked of us and where we are on it, and then if we want to revisit it or not.
Okay. Stuart, I think you wanted to...
Yeah. I wanted to speak to that. I wanted to actually make a motion and then explain why I made it.
I think the protocol would be to make a motion as to whether we would override the...
And then discuss it after the motion.
Make a motion as to whether or not to rehear. Motion second to rehear and vote on that.
Okay.
And then if that passes, then it would be put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, I'd like to make that motion, that we rehear it at our next meeting.
The motion that you make today, if I'm right, and I'll let our legal counsel make sure that we're right on the, is to place on your agenda at the next time a request whether to rehear it. It's not the rehearing.
Right. Not the rehearing.
Right, it's not the rehearing.
That's what I meant to say.
Right, okay.
If it's helpful, do you want me to read the rule to you, if it's helpful to you to, for everybody to hear what that is? Okay. It says, "Upon receipt of the request for rehearing, the council member in whose district the subject hearing, rehearing lies shall be notified." That's part one. Part two is, "The chairperson and the executive director shall review a request for rehearing for merit and determine whether the request should be considered by the full commission. If the chairperson and the executive director determine that the rehearing request is without merit and need not be considered by the commission, that decision will be noted on the commission's next available agenda."
And that's where we are right now.
That's where we are right now. "The commission may, by majority vote of the members present, overrule that decision of the chairperson and executive director and consider the request at a subsequent meeting." So your task now is to decide whether or not you want to overrule the chairperson and the director and actually put it on your agenda. That's the only question before you today.
That is your motion, is that correct?
It is my motion.
That's your second?
Okay. And my, I'm not, this will come as, this might come as a shock to me to hear next to this, but there are two opportunities to deal with the commission action that people disapprove of. One of them is to appeal in court, and one of them is to seek a rehearing. Obviously, folks who are concerned about that issue that we know about could go to court. They can also seek a rehearing. And if the rehearing is granted, it doesn't by any means say that we will reverse the decision. It's just that a rehearing is granted to take into account other factors, other information. So what we had, and not everyone was at the hearing, but what we had was a lengthy discussion and a statement from our director that he felt like this was infill development, and there was no analysis of whether that would make a difference as to whether or not we would, this should be approved or not. May be, may not be. But my point is that having that analysis, both whether it is infill or isn't, is subject to this or not, is information that we legitimately should have before making the final decision on this. It doesn't mean a, I don't know if we've made the right decision or not. We didn't, we don't have the mathematical analysis or the textual analysis to help us as a body determine how to look at that, in terms of was it infill or not. So because of that, I think we should rehear it.
Okay, there's a motion second to override the decision made by the chairman and the director and vote in at the next meeting as to whether we rehear or not.
Yeah, to put it on the agenda to consider whether to rehear or not, right?
Right, because at that point, you will be considering whether there is new information available that was not available at the prior hearing. And then you make that determination, and depending on what you feel about that, as to whether you will actually conduct a rehearing at the following meeting.
And at that meeting, is it...
At that meeting, it requires a maker and a motion and a second to be on the prevailing side, and we'll get that information. on the prevailing side, and we'll get that information.
That's correct. It says, "If a request for rehearing is considered by the commission, a motion to rehear may be made and seconded by any member of the commission who voted with the prevailing side. A simple majority of the commissioners present in constituting a quorum is sufficient to carry the motion to rehear. If the motion to rehear passes, the issue may be heard at that point and action taken, unless the issue was originally heard at a public hearing. When the issue had originally been heard at a public hearing, the issue must be set for public hearing again before action is taken. Notice of the rehearing shall be given in the manner required for the original public hearing." So potentially two more, you know, if you take it off the agenda today, that's your decision for today. Next week, we'll look at whether or not, next week, I'm sorry, next meeting, we would look at whether or not there is new evidence or new information or changed circumstances. And then if there were a public hearing, which I don't understand that there was on that one, it would be re-advertised for that.
Okay, there's a motion second. I want to see a show of hands, all in favor. Raise your hand. All opposed. Okay, motion is fails. You have a.
I do need, we do need a motion to accept the director's report and approve the administrative items.
Motion second. All in favor? Any opposed? You have anything on legislative, Walter, and you've got the election nomination.
Yes, two items. First, I want to say that the budget hearings are continuing in the council. Today, we had several started four o'clock and ended at six. We also had, on today was the second hearing on the operating budget. That took place today. And then we'll have on 27th, 28th, and 29th, we'll have the 30th, 4th, and 5th hearing on the operating budget. Also, at the request of Chairman McLean, a committee of three commissioners, Olivia and Blackshear, Jeff Hane, and Walter Hunt, was formed to name a vice, I mean, a chair and a vice chairman. Two commissioners was contacted, and which one showed an interest in the current vice chair decline. It was a consensus of the committee by a unanimous vote that Commissioner Greg Atkins, Atkins was selected as the next vice chair. Also, the chair and the commissioner, McLean, Commissioner McLean was selected as the chair.
Got the other nominations from the floor. Seeing none, is there a motion to, leg by acclamation? Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
We didn't have it on the agenda. We may have to, we'll probably have to put it back on the agenda next time. I know your, your rules and regulations require this meeting, and that was our fault for not having caught it, but we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for official. If I could just, just one thing I want to, I want to mention, we did have our budget hearing yesterday, and the chairman was there, and I thought, I thought the discussion with the council was extremely beneficial. I think they were very supportive of not only our request, but some supplemental funding to actually deal with some of the real problems we're facing right now in terms of staff turnover and morale and stuff. So they were very, it was a very good, I thought it was a very good hearing. Would you agree?
I do. I think they were very supportive and willing to maybe help sell a bit.